Rhonda's typically recording, so it should be, should be recording at this point. Do you get a text from Rhonda?
No, no, I subscribe to the YouTube.
Oh, the YouTube channel, they just went live? There's a lot of people watching this now compared to what it used to be with the Great Falls TV. A lot of people will call and ask questions, tell them that's on and they decide not to come, they just want to see the discussion. It was. It almost doesn't seem worth managing the Great Falls TV thing anymore with YouTube.
All right, looks like it's time to begin, so I'd like to call this March 10th meeting of the planning board to order. And I'm your new chair, Matthew Duval, and I'd like to start with, we'll do roll call, the planning board, starting on my left here.
Dan Carroll.
Evan Seer.
Stephen Martelli.
Riley Bergeron.
Okay, great. First item or next item on the agenda is the minutes from January and February.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of both the February 11th, 2020 and January 14th, 2020 meetings.
Second.
On favor? Okay, the motion is approved. Right, so because we have a couple of regular members of the planning board absent this evening, our associate member Riley Bergeron will be acting as a regular member this evening, so that means you can vote and make motions. All right, our first item up is the public hearing from BD Solar Auburn. Forty-five acre, 14.6 megawatt solar array on a parcel that's split between Auburn and Poland.
This is a new application, this application hasn't been before the board yet. As you said, for a 45 acre solar array split between the two communities, it's a little unusual in that regard. We've had a couple of projects right in that immediate area that are split between Auburn and Poland. It's my understanding that they have been to the Poland Planning Board and will be going back to them later this month for approvals. The proposal is located in the industrial zoning district. As the board's aware, he just wrapped up an ordinance for commercial type solar installations such as this one in the industrial district. That ordinance was just approved by the city council at the March 2nd meeting. And where this application was submitted before, we had double-checked and the ordinance review is as of the date of submittal and the finding of completeness, so they're not technically subject to the new standards. Having said that, you'll notice in the staff report that Megan attempted to break down the special exception site plan standards that the application is subject to and try to relate them to the standards she saw as somewhat parallel from the new solar ordinance for the industrial district. For example, one of the standards in the solar ordinance requires the submission of a solar glare study for parcels in close proximity to the airport, within the airport area of influence. And while the site plan special exception ordinance does not specifically reference a solar glare study, it does have a provision for the protection of adjacent areas against detrimental or offensive uses on the site such as artificial and reflected light. It also has provisions that protect the neighborhood characteristic and address any safety hazards. In this case, the applicant has already coordinated with the airport. The airport manager is here tonight, can certainly answer questions regarding that if you have them. The planning board has the liberty to use any of those sort of parallel site plan special exception standards as a basis for required conditions of the proposed solar array. You probably noticed there are a lot of conditions listed at the end of the staff report. Most of the conditions apply before construction or before operation of the solar array. Not necessarily things that could be addressed at this stage, but we're hoping some of those could be addressed as conditions. This is the first large scale solar array that we've reviewed. They have more conditions than you're used to seeing with a typical site plan approval. Most of them are straightforward, but some will require a little bit more discussion tonight by the board. The first few bullets on page 12 of the staff report just require as-built plans for the fire department. Adequate maintenance of the facility, so that'll be an ongoing maintenance requirement. And an operational and maintenance plan and ensuring the installation complies with national fire prevention and electrical codes. The bottom of page 12, top of 13 in your staff report, is a suggested condition based on the language in the solar ordinance to address decommissioning at the end of the project's useful life. The condition also addresses if the solar array is abandoned. The next condition requires a performance bond. The site plan ordinance requires the deposit of a surety in the amount of money determined by the city planner with the advice of various city departments and agencies concerned to be sufficient to ensure compliance with the approved site plan. The solar ordinance requires submission of a performance bond at the time of application and also requires that it include a mechanism for calculating increasing removal costs due to inflation. In the most recent submission by the applicant, that's the shorter document labeled dated March 5th, the responses to questions that were raised by staff. The, they also included the estimate of the value of the various solar array components at the time of decommissioning. The planning board should review the decommissioning estimate and decide what additional information is necessary. For example, a contingency for the cost of removal of the project in the future. We could look at if there are any other industry standards for that to compare this to if we're not comfortable with the information that's there tonight at a future meeting. The other conditions on page 13 are from department heads. We recommend the applicant obtain sign-off from the electrical department before the issuance of a building permit. A lot of these items requested by the city electrician can be addressed before construction when the electrical components have been finalized. But a lot of those detailed electrical design drawings aren't typically available, whether it's a solar project or a building, at the time that the planning board is approving, is reviewing the overall site plan. So we would ask that those be addressed as, as conditions prior to the issuance of a building permit. The fire department requested the addition of turnarounds and a wider access road. The additional impervious area changed, the stormwater calculations. These new figures have been submitted to our engineering department, but we haven't received their approval yet on the stormwater side for the increase of impervious area that was requested by the fire department to make sure the access road is adequate. Lastly, the applicant will still need to obtain their DEP and Army Corps permits before a building permit can be issued for the project, and that's a fairly typical condition of, of larger projects that require those approvals as well. There is a condition in the staff report as well that says that if the project is not completed within 12 months, that the city shall revoke the permits. We'd rather have that worded in May, so the city would have the option to do that. But if you find 12 months after an eventual approval, that they're three quarters complete with the project and they're progressing, we certainly wouldn't want to be obligated to revoke their permits, we'd want to just work with them to finish the project. The applicant is here, as well as the airport manager, if you do have questions about this project or as it relates to the airport and the glare study.
Questions for staff?
Sorry.
Eric, you got 142 acres here. And you're looking at only developing 45. Are we looking for possible expansion at a later date? So I think we can ask the applicant about that, I'm not aware of any potential expansion. I think a lot of the, the site, if you're looking at the plan, you can see it's not a perfect square or rectangle. It's really been designed around the natural resource constraints on the property, the wetlands, trying to avoid impacts to the wetlands and minimize impacts where they do have to cross a wetland area. But I don't, I don't believe there's any plans for expansion at this site. And expansion into those natural resource areas would likely be cost prohibitive anyways. As far as wetland mitigation fees.
Okay, there are no further questions for staff, I think we can move on to the public comment. Oh, sorry, the applicant, we'd like to hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Sean Thies with CES Engineers representing the applicant tonight. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight due to a last minute emergency, but I think I can address any of the questions that you may have in regards to the potential expansion. At this time, there's no, and in the future, I can't see that this particular site, as Eric explained, you can see just by the layout, we've weaved in and around a lot of wetlands out there and we're already, with the impacts that we have, there's a pretty substantial in-loofe payment for wetland impacts to main DEP and the Army Corps. Any additional work would just make that a larger number, so I don't, I don't think this would ever be expanded beyond what you see right now. Some of the comments that Eric had mentioned, I think we've, we've addressed all the concerns from the fire department as far as road width, we've added the turnarounds. One note regarding the impervious area for stormwater. We initially modeled a 24 foot wide strip up through there as impervious even though the road was originally proposed as, I believe, 16 feet wide, 14 or 16 feet, they asked us to widen that to 20. So we didn't, based on the plan, we added impervious area, but based on our calculations, we actually had already covered that, so it really didn't affect our numbers much, but I don't believe the engineering department had actually reviewed it because they were going to wait until we provided revised numbers based on the fire department's. So that shouldn't have, I believe the numbers were exactly the same when we, we actually refined what was in there and added the turnarounds in that were requested. Other than that, I guess I'll just answer any questions that you, that you might have, if you have any, or anybody from the public, if they have any questions.
What's the total amount of land area that will need to be cleared of trees and ground cover?
So we are trying to recall if the 45 acres of the development includes clearing beyond the panels. So some areas, we're clearing outside of the panels to allow, to prevent shading on the panels. In areas where we're doing that, specifically in wetland areas, it's going to be allowed to regrow into a scrub shrub wetland situation rather than tall trees. So I don't know if that answers your question exactly, I don't have the exact number of it. I can't recall if it's different than the 45 acres, if that included clearing or if that was just the array area.
Okay, yeah, because if I recall correctly, there's already some open space, but.
There's, there's a little bit in some areas and the majority of it is.
Much as required for the project.
Yeah, the majority of it's, whether it's wooded or recently harvested wood, it sort of varies throughout there. But there are a couple of small, essentially up by Lewiston Junction Road in that area where the cursor is, that's, that's an open area. And then I think towards the, the north side, there might be a, sort of an openish area, but otherwise it's sort of sparsely wooded or in different stages of regrowth. I would, one, I guess, comment to cover on, when Eric had mentioned the, the condition about changing the word shall to may, we'd also like to request that the, that the timeframe be changed to 24 months rather than 12. Just based on from the date of approval and the way this will work with DEP permitting and then financing for the project, it's most likely not going to start until either late fall or spring of 2021. So to have the completion of it in 12 months, that, that may be tight. So if we could have an allowable 24 month window for completion, it would be helpful.
Eric, is that wording from, as it is now, 12 months from approval or 12 months from starting the project?
So there's, there's a couple of clocks, the planning board has the 12 month from approval language, but it can be extended by an additional year, up to the 24 months, either now or as we near the end of the 12 months, it could be extended. Sounds like doing it that way might cause some problems or concerns with their financing, so they've asked if we could extend it on the front end to 24 months. And then from the day that they pull the building permit, then there's three months to start construction, 12 months to finish. But they won't pull the building permit until they're just about ready to construct.
So that, that itself is 15 months.
The.
Twelve and three, correct?
The 12 and three overlap, so they have three months to start and they've already, if they've used all their three, then they would only have nine months to finish. But again, we would typically grant an extension as long as they're.
And that's from when the permit's pulled?
From the date of the building permit being pulled.
Which is after we approve it anyways.
They probably wouldn't, yeah, they probably wouldn't issue that permit until, you know, just weeks before construction is scheduled to start.
Eric, would that require a, a formal extension on our part? It's my understanding that when we approve a site plan, well, I guess not a site plan, but a special exception for something like this, the ordinance stipulates that, that essentially only is good for one year. That they need to, that it doesn't necessarily need to be completed within one year, but it needs to have begun within one year. And if the applicant is asking for 24 months instead, is it enough to indicate 24 months in the condition section? Or would it be staff's preference, if we choose to go that route, and that's the discussion we'll have, would it be staff's preference that we create some sort of different language to, to explicitly state that we are extending our 12 month limit up to 24 months?
It would be better if you explicitly stated as part of the approval that it includes an extension out to 24 months. Yeah, the lang, the language in the ordinance just says that approval of a site plan shall expire one year after the date of approval unless all building permits have been obtained to begin construction. So it actually looks like in the staff report that was slightly misstated or misrepresented that the construction doesn't have to be complete, but they have to be at the point where they've applied, they've obtained their building permits within 12 months of the planning board approval. So I don't know if that language would be fine for the applicant, or he may still be asking for an extension on that. What is your approximate timeline on building from beginning to end?
To, to construct?
Yeah.
For a project this size, I would guess six to eight months.
So if there was, if there was an approval granted either March or April, would it be a problem to have the building permit in place by a year from that?
It may not be, just the, the way this was worded as a suggested.
Yeah, I think.
Condition was construction is, it needed to be system installed and operating within 12 months.
And I'm just looking at it now and realizing that I think that was misrepresented slightly from what the ordinance actually says, that it's, it's to the date of obtaining the building permits. You'd have 12 months to do that and then you could continue under the building permit. So Eric, you're looking for an extension of 12 months on your wording in the paperwork? So that they would obtain their building permits within either 12 or 24, or we, you know, we can ask him if 12 is.
Well, so I was fine with the way it's worded here as, as far as being, where it says the solar sys, the solar energy system is not installed and functioning within 24 months from the date of approval, the city may revoke approvals. So if, if, if we can get a, if it was approved tonight and we had 24 months to have it up and operating, that's fine. Doesn't say anything about when we need to pull a building permit, but.
And I think that would, that would meet the needs under the ordinance, it's not the exact wording, but it could meet the, meet the same purpose.
That's good. I get Lou with that.
So can you talk me through your decommissioning plan a little bit? So I read the, the response and you detail what the cost would be and then you have the salvage costs. But I wonder what you're actually proposing.
What it would entail?
No, what, are you proposing that you would, that you put up the surety, as it says in the site plan? And you just provided the salvage information for us to show the entirety of the project or?
Yeah, I guess, so. I'm not sure how, I guess, the decommissioning will work however the city chooses to have that work. DEP also requires a decommissioning plan. DEP does not allow salvage value to be included in that, in that cost estimating, so it's whatever the cost is to remove it. And then potentially whether it needs to have inflation or every so often it needs to be revisited. But we don't, we don't include salvage value in that cost for DEP. So. I'm assuming we're not going to have multiple bonds for the city, for DEP and for whoever else to cover the decommissioning cost. So I would think, and, and, and I don't believe, DEP's not, there's options there on how that, whether it's a bond, whether it's a letter of credit, and it sounds like there's similar flexibility there with the city. So I think we just need to, everybody needs to agree to a number that, that works. And, and then if there's a specific, a specific form of surety that the city wants, then that's, well, I guess what we'll have to provide. Otherwise, if it can just be up to the applicant to work with staff or whoever to establish what that surety is and the amount, then that's what, that's what will be provided.
Okay, that's, that's hopeful thinking, I just wasn't sure if you were calculating the salvage costs in there.
Yeah, I know, they, they put it in there just because it shows that there is value to this material. Even if it's 30 years from now, there's recyclable value there. Granted, nobody knows in 30 years what that's actually going to be for a value, and I think that's why DEP is not allowing it to be counted. Because in some instances, the, the scrap value could potentially offset all of the cost of removing the equipment.
Thank you.
Are you, so if there is a bond needed, surety, whatever it is, line of credit, whatever, that's a determined amount from us, DEP has a determined, you were stating, so you, they're thinking one bond would satisfy both entities?
So what with, I guess the examples where we've run into multiple agencies or, or interests having a performance guarantee, we see it with gravel pits for reclamation bonds sometimes where DEP's requiring that and we have a requirement for the same thing, or with cell towers, quite often the, the property owner that's leasing the land to the cell tower will have a performance guarantee, whether that's a bond, a letter of credit or cash, there's, you know, multiple ways to achieve that. With those two gravel pits and cell towers, and when there is another interest that's requiring it, we just require that we're named as one of the beneficiaries on that bond, so they don't have to pay, if they're using cash, they don't have to give two different entities the same amount of cash or a bond, they don't have to pay two or three times if there's different, different people concerned with it. We'd be fine with being named on the DEP surety, whatever, whatever form that takes.
Another question, with respect to your contact to the inland fisheries and wildlife. They suggest that you contact about both the vernal pools and the bats, I believe, did you?
Yeah, so we've done, as part of the wetland delineation work, we've done a vernal pool survey. So that has been covered. We actually just prepared a memo for the town of Poland because they had a similar. I didn't bring a copy of it tonight, but it addresses that a vernal pool survey has been done. It also addresses the swamp oak.
Yeah.
Survey. Which a lot of that should be, it's probably, it may not be in the city's application, but it's in the copy of our DEP application that the city has a copy of.
Yeah, it's, it's missing here, the archaeological stuff is.
Yes, so the archaeological survey's been done, the swamp oak survey's been done, and the vernal pool survey's been done. Bats are being addressed as part of our permitting with Army Corps of Engineers in relation to the tree clearing. So US Fish and Wildlife is, provides input as part of the Army Corps permitting process. And they're the ones that typically have input on the bat issue.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for the applicant? No, okay, thank you very much. So we now like to open the public comment section of the, this hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Anybody want to speak? Nope. Do I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Discussion?
I have a question for Eric. Given the proximity to wetlands, is the applicant required to meet our updated timber harvest ordinance? Or is this not considered a timber harvest because it's not being harvested?
So it's, it's not a shoreline zone timber harvest?
Okay.
They do have standards under the Natural Resource Protection Act with DEP for areas that are, that are physically impacted like filled to construct the gravel roadway or side slopes. And they do have with DEP or, and certainly with Army Corps of Engineer requirements even for areas of the wetland that are cleared but then allowed to regrow vegetation.
Okay, and those, so you're saying those are covered at the federal level?
State, state and federal level in this case for a project requiring their permits.
So Eric, I do have one more question, normally our conditions are numbered, which allows us to readily reference specific conditions that we either want to remove or to amend?
Okay, in this, in this case, they're not in the staff recommendations then?
Right. So could I ask for clarity? Would it be fair to say that that staff could amend this to be condition 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5A, 5B, 5C, 6, 6A, 6B, 6C, 6D, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 and 12?
So after after 5D, we have the city shall revoke.
That that
Six.
That would be six.
That would be six and then A, B, C, D, and to that. And then seven?
Would be, would start as before the start of instruction?
Yep, I just want to make sure I get them right so I can follow the discussion after. 11, 12 is the last one?
Yeah. What's, I mean, as staff, would you be willing to accept that as sort of a on the fly amendment to the staff?
Absolutely.
Make it easier?
Any further thoughts or comments from planning board on this?
I would like to make a motion
Yeah, thank you.
to approve the site plan special exception by BD Solar LLC to construct a 45 acre 14.6 megawatt solar array on an approximately 142.74 acre parcel split between the city of Auburn and the town of Poland on Lewson Junction Road. Parcel ID number 142-007 in the industrial zoning districts with the findings that it meets the conditions for both site plan and special exception approval and that it be subject to conditions 1 through 12 outlined in the staff report dated March 10, 2019. And that an amendment to condition 6 be that the sentence, the city shall revoke any beginning with the city shall revoke any approvals and or pursue removal to be amended to read the city may revoke any approvals and or pursue removal. And that 6A be amended to reflect 24 months from the date of approval under this ordinance instead of 12 months.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Passes. Next up, we have a discussion about solar energy generating systems in the agricultural resource protection district.
Begin with the staff?
Yes, I can do an introduction and this was listed, I noticed, on the on the agenda as a discussion and scheduled public hearing. So what we're hoping to do is have a discussion and get to the point where we think we have enough feedback that we can draft something that we would then schedule for a public hearing. This is not an official public hearing, although the board's certainly welcome to, you know, invite public feedback tonight if you want to. You do have some representatives from Nexamp Solar here tonight, Henry Barnett and Palmer Palmer Norwood. They were here at the last meeting. The board had indicated that they would like to hear some information from a solar developer and they were nice enough to be willing to come back and and provide that if you want to tonight. I know they have a short presentation, maybe 10 or 15 minutes, and they're happy to answer questions. At the February meeting, the planning board discussed this item. The councils asked us to look into it and this would be to, now that we have a set of standards to apply to solar in the industrial zone, there's been a lot of interest in solar in the ag zone. Council's really looking for an ordinance that would address the unique needs of the ag zone, protect ag land from the impacts of solar, but to allow for some solar development in the ag zone. There were a number of questions raised at the last meeting. We broke down all of those questions and suggestions from the planning board. Starting on page 10 of your staff report for ordinance language. Clearing prime soils, ecosystem, wildlife, total land area occupied occupied by the solar array, grid connections and required infrastructure, ensuring the solar arrays do not have negative impacts on agriculture or preclude a farmer from pastoring animals, panel density and shade mitigation. And lastly, ensuring property owners can install solar arrays for their own electricity use without being subject to the ordinance. That would be for projects that are not necessarily of a commercial scale. We think we heard all of those as as issues that the board wanted to look into at the last meeting. The language options presented are certainly not set in stone. We really want the planning board to look at options, choose the ones they think address the the unique issues in the ag zone. Remove or add any language, wordsmith them as you see fit. Examples of agriculture-specific standards for solar arrays are difficult to find. We can certainly do some additional research for the April meetings, but there was some information pri- provided from a group that includes Maine Farmland Trust, Department of Ag at the last meeting that gives some guidelines for solar in agricultural fields and and land. At the last meeting, the planning board also wanted to make sure the standards proposed did not violate any of the ag zone principles. The board wanted to make sure there was good engagement with ag zone landowners, the ag committee and the conservation commission. We are expecting, certainly not expecting a final ordinance tonight. We are expecting that there are appointments made to the Agriculture Committee on Monday, this coming Monday. So I think that would line up nicely if the board was able to shell out an ordinance and have a public hearing in April. Then we could probably pass that right along to the Conservation Commission and Ag Committee if that's where the board wants wants to pass it. We could certainly have a joint meeting with the Conservation Commission as well, possibly at the next planning board hearing if that's something the board wanted. Similar to what we did for the industrial district, we found it helpful to go through the language options with the board and get the board's thought on each one. As far as clearing, there are four options for solar arrays on forested land. Option 1 requires the site to be replanted with the same number of tree species after decommissioning. Option 2 requires the same number of trees to be planted somewhere else in the ag zone, not on prime farmlands. Option 3 limits the amount of clearing to 30% of the parcel. And option 4 allows, under specific conditions pertaining to soil erosion, a decommissioning plan and a project impact fee. I think that this is one of those areas where the board has to think about what is, what is more important to protect in the ag zone, I think. Is it prime farmland soils? Or is it forested area? We have about 75% of the ag zone that's forested and there is in order to allow for some solar development in the ag zone, I think you're going to have that sort of push and pull of where it goes. It's either going to impact land that's cleared or land that's forested. And trying to, trying to come up with a standard that meets the the values, I guess, that the board sees fit for for the ag zone. Option 1, Megan has detailed in the staff report says if a solar energy generating system is proposed on forest land, a policy of zero net loss should be followed by replanting the solar site after decommissioning. That's one real strong forest protection option. Staff's opinion is that it probably needs to be more balanced between prime farmland soils and allowing for some clearing of forest lands and and maybe even that clearing for solar projects is a way to clear land that could eventually become available for agriculture 20 or 30 years from now. Option 2 would be to add if a solar energy generating system is proposed on forest land, a fa- a policy of zero net loss should be followed, actually requiring planting the same number of trees on the front end as are removed from the solar, for the solar project in a different area. Option 3, that if a solar energy generating system is proposed on forest land, up to 30% of the subject parcel may be cleared. I think that starts to find some some balance. And option 4, if a solar energy generating system is proposed in forest land on a parcel adjacent to prime farmland or currently used for farming, clearing of farmland may be permitted under certain conditions, not resulting in unnecessary soil erosion, decommissioning plan provided at the time of application, including some kind of financial security surety and a project impact fee as provided for in the use of prime farmland for a solar energy generating system with the purpose of converting other forested areas on prime soils into cleared farmland area. That would allow for, potentially for, if there are impacts to farmland, allow for the funding of a program that would allow farmers that are actively actively engaged in farming to clear land elsewhere in the ag zone to return that to a condition that it could be used for agriculture. The the next section, similar, I think it really comes down to what are the planning board's priorities on the value of prime farm soils versus the value of forested areas. It allows for a range of options dealing with prime farm farmland soils instead of the forested areas that are somewhat similar to the way the forest land is dealt with, but but focused on protecting farmland. The other standard that Megan had summarized as a possibility is to look at the impacts to ecosystems and wildlife. That could consider impacts to forested area or to land that's currently used in agriculture. The total land area within the ag zone dedicated to solar, there could be limitations on not having more than a certain percentage of a parcel or of the overall land in the ag zone dedicated to solar to try to mitigate or limit the impacts to agricultural uses. And grid connections was another area where there were some examples provided. I think the the industry itself is going to choose sites where it's affordable to connect into the grid, so I don't know that that standard is is all that important that we legislate it. Just because of the cost, I think that'll be somewhat self self ensuring. Possible standards for ensuring solar installations do not have negative impacts on agriculture. Megan suggested a couple of options here where the solar energy generating system shall prepare a vegetation management plan that would allow for the grazing of farm animals. Or that they actually have to design a plan that prioritizes the ability to co-mingle agriculture and energy as part of the project. I think option 1, that at least allows for it, is probably more feasible because it could be very difficult for a project to find a farmer and ensure that they're going to do some kind of an activity on an ongoing basis. But just allowing for it would allow for a farmer that sees an opportunity to work with the solar developer to use that land for agriculture as well as as the solar project. The density of panels and shade mitigation, pointed out earlier in the staff report that we inadvertently referenced the setback standards in the industrial district, thinking that the standards reference structures, but they actually reference buildings. Solar panels are not a building, but they they are structured potentially. So we may want to add a standard if we think a setback is important in the ag zone, we may want to add one that's specific to solar structures. Currently, the ag zone has a 25 foot front and rear setback and a 15 foot side setback for for all buildings. That would apply to anything, whether it's residential, commercial, agricultural, that's allowed in the zone. It also has a lot coverage standard of 10 or 20% of the lot. I know in the stormwater standards, which is where we see a lot of attention to detail on lot coverage, DEP is allowing that the land underneath the solar panels not be considered impervious area. Really, the only the only impervious or lot that's covered with impervious area is the gravel roadways, any structures or concrete pads in the actual footprint of the footings, and I think treating those in consistently with DEP would make a lot of sense. They actually allow for meadow buffers underneath solar panels to be used to treat stormwater. It actually serves as long as it's not mowed more than a couple times a year. A similar function to a meadow buffer that doesn't have a structure over it. So there's a lot of, a lot of different aspects to think about based on that staff report. I think it'd be a good chance to hear from the solar developers, hear their perspective, and we can have a discussion with the board.
Thank you. So, yeah, I think the things that the the way I propose and I'd love to hear from the board about this, that we hear from the people from Nexamp, is it? And then consider hearing from the public and then I think we can work our way through each of these questions and have a discussion and make recommendations so that we can move toward a public hearing next month. How's that sound?
I like that. I I will, I I think it would be nice to give members of the public the opportunity to hear us speak a little bit about our ideas first, then hear from them and then come back. That'd be my personal preference.
I'm open to that.
I I just think we might get more pointed feedback.
Okay, do we need a motion at this point to invite Nexamp?
Nope, I don't think so.
Well, let's invite Nexamp up to.
We brought a a printout of a solar project representative just to try to give some scale to things and I know you've obviously been evaluating them, so I don't know if that's that's helpful or not, but we're happy to put that on display if it is useful. Just let us know. So members, thank you very much for allowing us to come and speak this evening. My name is Palmer Moore, Vice President at Nexamp. My colleague Henry Barrett works on development projects with Nexamp as well. And we just wanted to make ourselves available to the board to answer any questions that might help provide some context from the industry in terms of evaluating these various options that have been presented in the staff report. We did bring a brief presentation which really focuses primarily on the community solar aspect of these projects or the way that the energy from these projects gets distributed to the community. So that's what the scope of that presentation is for. If there are questions around that, we're happy to to dive into that and go through that presentation, but I just wanted to make clear that that that's really what the specific, we we heard that question raised last time and wanted to make sure we could try to address it, but only when it's appropriate to do so.
I have a question in general. In the ag zone type of solar arrays, are there any installations, like I noticed the one you just had, they're flat on the ground. There's nothing going on underneath it. Are there any type of installations that allow some type of ag farming resource to take place under the panels? Growing, seeding, feeding? Growing, seeding, feeding, anything like that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, a lot of our projects, we born and raised in Massachusetts, our company is, so we've done a lot of work there. And Massachusetts, just by virtue of the fact that they've been at this type of technology and land use for over a decade now, have had to grapple with some of these issues a little more advanced than some of their neighbors in the Northeast. So that, that is something that has been evaluated and tested. University of Massachusetts has test sites where they're actually growing crops beneath the arrays and measuring the yield that they get from those. Initial findings that they've collected to date have shown that the yield is about sixty percent of what you would encounter in a uncovered state. So it's not, not an optimum yield, obviously. And it certainly depends on the type of crops that you're seeking to grow there. They are focused on crops that theoretically would benefit from a partially shaded environment. So you can certainly do it. It does provide a agricultural yield. You can also introduce grazing animals to the area. So we, a number of our project sites do have flocks of sheep on them that are doing the vegetative maintenance for us. And those are, you know, they freely roam both outside and within the array areas. So from a duos perspective, that, that is perfectly successful. The actual food crop case, it's, you know, it's not going to be as successful as if it were a undisturbed site, but it's certainly something that has proved to be viable at the very least.
So continuing on this theme, I do want to actually hear what you have to say in your presentation. But continuing, what are the impacts on soil moisture? Do you know, underneath?
I don't have, you know, data to cite there, but I can say that, you know, we, we know from maintaining the, the projects that we have. So stormwater runoff basically distributes evenly across the area under the array. So that ground is going to get runoff penetration much in the same way as the uncovered area adjacent to it. Because it's shaded, that, that moisture then isn't going to evaporate off quite as quickly as the adjacent area. But we, we, where we don't mow immediately under the arrays, there's no shortage of vegetation that springs up in place of that. So it certainly receives plenty of, of water underneath there and retains that moisture in the soil.
Okay, but you haven't mapped whether or not soils generally get more, have more water or less water?
Not, not scientifically, just, you know, back of the envelope. Because you're covering some of that land area, presumably you're going to have less evaporation, some of that moisture is going to stay in the ground versus not.
Okay, great, thank you. Should we hear your presentation?
Sure, and, and nothing too formal here. We just wanted to respond to the questions, I think, that, that came out of the last meeting as it relates to how, how these projects function. I think we, we saw some comments in the staff report, sort of just for, looking for clarification. So the way these, these projects function is, and, and we're primarily focused on what's called a community solar construct where there can literally be hundreds or even thousands of, of folks' utility accounts that are receiving credits from these projects. And, and what that mean, what that doesn't mean is that there is any sort of physical connection from the solar project to the actual recipient of those credits. And so there's nothing that's changing in the terms of the actual grid infrastructure in the neighborhood where these projects are located. It, it's really just an administrative process on the back, backend that you don't see other than the utility assigns those credits to the bills that we designate as recipients for them, and then that utility customer will get a bill that shows a, a negative line item where one didn't used to be, where they're receiving credits from, from that community solar project. So it's, it's really more of an administrative process than a physical process of actually building out any sort of infrastructure. So I just want to clarify that these projects kind of sit out on their own with their own infrastructure tying into the grid at that site only. And there's no physical connections to the end users of the, the credits being generated by those projects. That all happens on the utility side. So
So just the use case then would be, so a community decides it wants to pool its resources and build a solar, do a solar project somewhere, and then as a result, they get, from whatever's generated, they get credits on their electricity bills? Is that what we're talking about?
So they, they could do that. That's one, that's one way to approach it. Generally, we don't see that in the Northeast. There's some markets like Colorado and other states where the program is structured such that those projects are essentially co-owned by a bunch of different end users. And they, you know, they, they buy into the project and then they receive the benefits from it. In this case, what we're talking about, in, in the case of Next Amp specifically, but also other solar developers that you would generally encounter in this region is that developer is bearing the sole cost and, and implementation of that project. And so there, there is no cost or other input required from the community. That project gets built, it's owned and operated by that developer. And then the benefits are merely distributed to the community to the extent that people sign up for receiving those benefits from the project. So there, there's, there's the way that you mentioned that you, you can buy into a project, but you generally don't see that in the Northeast, just in part because of the way that the solar programs are established in our local markets here.
So explain how community members then participate in your type of project.
So they, they quite simply sign up to participate, assuming there's capacity available in the project. And then, once the project becomes operational, their bill will reflect that they're receiving credits that are being allocated by the utility. So their, their relationship with their utility, CMP or whoever, doesn't change. But they're getting a bill that, that reflects that they're now getting credits from a solar project. And then, let's say, you know, in a given month, they received a hundred dollars worth of credits from that solar project. So their bill was effectively reduced by a hundred dollars. Somebody like Next Amp would then separately invoice them in, in that same billing period for, say, ninety dollars. And so their net savings is ten dollars. So they, they save ten percent over the course of that billing period. And that's, that's really the extent of their participation in the, in the community solar project.
Got it. So I sign up with you, I get your benefit and then pay it back to you, essentially, not all of it.
Not all of it, pay it back at a discount and the difference is your savings.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, I got a question on that same line. Excuse me. So, you know, we're talking about ag zones, say a farmer, you know, this is all, one of these projects is strictly on this farmer's land. It's his land, it's sitting on his land. How would that benefit? How was that a community project? I could see him reaping the benefits we're discussing, but how would the people, you know, how would the surrounding neighbors be able to, how would they access? How would that be a community project rather than just that farmer's benefit?
Yeah, so oftentimes when we work with farmers, we're not typically delivering the power physically to their onsite operations. So they're participating in that project much the same way that everyone else in the community is, in, in that they sign up, they provide us with their utility account number. We provide that to the utility and we tell them what portion of the project is going to get allocated to that utility account number. And those credits that are generated in that given month of the solar project's operation then get allocated to that bill. And so, again, just like everyone else in the community who wanted to sign up, it's a simple transaction on the utility bill side that just shows they get some savings generated by the solar project. Someone like Next Amp would then separately invoice them for the credits they received at a discount. And so their net savings are the difference between those two bills.
Right. So, again, back to the farmer whose land it's on. You know, if he decides, you know, crops are not doing the best, you know, I'm, we're gonna, rather than getting a hundred percent of our potatoes, whatever it is, now, you know, we're going to try this, we might get forty percent. I would see the farmer should have the ability to reap a lot more benefit than anybody else in the community.
Well, they're also reaping the benefit of, of being the host for the project, so they're going to have a
That's the part I was getting to.
Yeah, so separate from the whole concept of community solar, they are a landlord essentially to the solar project being a tenant on their property, just like a, there might be a tenant farmer on their property. So you lay out a set amount of acreage, you lease that from the farmer, and you're, you're paying them a rent check.
No, I was going to follow up and say, typically is there the addition of a lease? But you've answered that question.
Yeah, absolutely. That, and, and more often than not, it's, it's the lease and not the community solar component that the farmer is, is participating in.
Yeah, because, you know, I'm looking at, or I believe a lot of us are looking at the ability for the farmer to make a living on his farmland that he's not making by farming.
Absolutely.
Chairman, if I could just add, the other benefit from the city's perspective is the project that you were looking at earlier tonight is not a community project. It's a, it's a project, as the application said, that sells the, the power back directly to the utility, sells it to Central Maine Power. Those projects are fully taxable projects. These community solar projects, from what I understand, it may not have been exactly what the legislature intended when they adopted the legislation, from what I've heard, but they are tax exempt projects. So what that means is the equipment will be exempt from taxation, but the constitution requires that the state, when they, when they create exemptions, pay the community fifty percent of the value that they lost from that exemption. So the, these community scale projects will most likely be tax exempt, but we'll see, we'll, we'll receive fifty percent of the taxes they would have paid had they not been exempted from the state as part of revenue sharing. They do provide that incentive and they really, they don't add, you know, eight thousand dollars per kid to a school system. They don't require more plowing of roads and they, they should be a net benefit to the community, I think, as, as compared to the services that they require.
Eric, is the, so if the community members don't buy in, say, for instance, what's the difference between selling that electricity to CMP and the project that's a commercial sale to CMP? Like, that's still going to be tax exempt, the end of community members, for instance, take a while to sign up?
Yeah, I, I think, my guess is you're going to have subscribers before, at least a substantial number before you would, you would complete a project. I don't know exactly how that's working for the, for the developer, but I think there will be with the discounted rate. I don't think there'll be a shortage of, of customers buying into those projects and the idea that it's, it's power that's not from fossil fuels as well. I think that we could ask them, but I, my guess is by the time a project is constructed, they've sold most of their credits. I know the city's looking at options for, it doesn't necessarily have to be like an individual resident of the community that could buy the power. A business could buy the power. The city of Auburn could buy the power from the community projects. I believe there could be larger, larger customers.
So the project like this would have X amount of kilowatts, however you want to say, you know, word it, available to purchase?
Correct.
To buy in on?
Yeah, correct.
You can get two thousand community members or two large companies or something like that until it's, until, until it's all been purchased?
Correct, yeah. There are some parameters around it, but it's, it's fairly flexible in that you can, that, that makeup of who is receiving the benefits from the project is, can be fairly diverse.
Do you have projects like this in Maine?
Uh, not currently, no, just because, again, this is something that is, you know, the, the program that's really driving these projects is launching this summer. So it's really kind of a new construct for, for everyone involved. But, but just, just south of here, we have plenty of projects that are operational, doing very much the same thing with the utilities and with the end users as well.
Any more questions? No? Do you have more in your presentation or?
The, the, again, the presentation is really focused on the, the community solar component. And, and the slide is really just talking about, you know, the, the seasonal variability that these projects generate and how that, how that works relative to somebody's electricity consumption. But I think separate from the presentation, we're also certainly happy to discuss and provide perspective on any of the different components of the ordinance that the board is currently reviewing in the context of this meeting tonight, if that's helpful.
As we review the ordinance, we'll be tasked with both preserving the integrity of the resource, agriculture and resource protection zone balanced with promoting the interests of landowners. Part of that is also striking a balance with viability for developers. Doesn't make sense for us to develop an ordinance if the ordinance is not conducive to developer buy-in. I know that we will get feedback from landowners and the agricultural community. While you're in front of us, what, what are the primary factors that influence your ability to develop a parcel that, that you would like us to be at least thinking about as we try to strike that balance?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. I think certainly all of the issues that are contained in this report for tonight's consideration are, are important ones that the board should be considering. From the developer's perspective, I would say what, what makes a project viable and what makes a project unable to move forward are really driven by the, the cost to build the project. And so if a site is, is expensive in that it is fully forested, you know, one, so obviously we would primarily be looking for previously disturbed sites. If it, the topography is fairly aggressive or the subsoil conditions are challenging, that can make a site difficult. These projects, while they have some flexibility and, and our overall goal is to basically leave the land as is and let the project essentially drape over the land in its existing form. There are tolerances there that, you know, if we go beyond them, then we're talking about doing a lot of grading and, and other types of significant earthwork that, that ratchet up the cost pretty quickly. So the, the cost to prepare the site for this type of project are often one of the leading factors to making a site viable or not. And the other is, is interconnection. So looking at the grid infrastructure that's available in, in the city and thinking about where sites can reasonably be located because of access to infrastructure. You know, it's, it's highly unlikely that a project will prove viable if it's located way out in the, the extreme corners of a community where it's kind of at the tail end of the utility's infrastructure. And because of the cost to, you know, upgrade the grid to make that point within that utility's network suitable for, for having essentially a small power plant connect into it are going to be insurmountable, most likely. So those are really the two biggest factors.
So, excuse my ignorance, but, so when you say infrastructure, what specific types of infrastructure are you, are you talking about? Are you able to say tie in to the lines that I see, you know, hung across the road from my house? Or is there, are, are you required to be near high voltage?
Yeah, so for this, yes.
How does, what, what specific infrastructure is conducive?
Right, so for this, these types of projects, we're really talking about projects that are, you know, anywhere from, say, a megawatt to five megawatts in size or roughly five to thirty acres in size. These are, you know, what, what I think the industry would consider small to mid-scale projects. And so they're, they're definitely not connecting to high voltage. So where you see a transmission line cutting through the city, that is not the infrastructure that these projects are targeting. They are targeting the infrastructure that is on the road. that is on the roadway, and that infrastructure specifically would be three-phase, a three-phase circuit versus a single-phase circuit. And, you know, from, from sort of ground level, what does that mean? It means you look up the pole, and, and it's got three conductors running generally on a spreader bar at the top of the pole versus one or two conductors, generally at a lower elevation on the pole. So if you, if you start to drive around the city's more rural sections and look up and see that, you know, shorter utility pole with one or two conductors being held on it, you know, that that's, that's an area that, you know, once you get probably just a, you know, maybe even a quarter mile beyond the, the three-phase infrastructure, that's an area where those projects are most likely not gonna be viable.
So, you done?
Yes.
Sorry, Evan. So I'm saying if, so a farmer has a flat 30-acre field, borders the main road, at, at his farm, he has three-phase pumps, motors, conveyors, belts, there's a perfect opportunity. Is that correct?
Uh, potentially, yeah.
Without seeing, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be near a substation or anything like that.
Um, right, yeah. I mean, generally, you know, a very, very high-level rule of thumb would be the, the further out you are from key nodes in the utility network like substations, the more costly it becomes to interconnect to the grid.
So even if, even if there's three-phase power there, it's still?
If there's three-phase power, if that, if that, and generally that, that situation, that three-phase might have been brought to that point specifically for the farm, and it doesn't go any further, right, at dead ends, right, at that, that use that they have right there. You're on the outskirts of that grid infrastructure, and so there starts to be a lot of variability in the quality of the electricity being carried on those lines. If you introduce a multi-megawatt generator right there, there's a really good chance that you're gonna impact the quality of that grid even further, to the extent that you're gonna have to install equipment that fixes that impact, and that equipment is expensive.
Do you have more?
Um, no, I mean,
No?
No, unless, unless there were additional questions, really. I was just trying to see if there were questions from the board about community solar. We'd be happy to address those, but again, presentation aside, happy to speak to any sort of the land use considerations as well, as it relates to soils, or topography, site use, colocation of other agricultural uses, that type of thing. We've, you know, we've done a, a lot of projects, cited on agricultural land, and just happy to share any of those experiences to the help, extent that helps the board.
Okay, great. So it feels like the plan, that we as a planning board should discuss a little bit, and then maybe ask questions as they come up, as we move through these, these questions here. So bringing this back to the board, first question?
Oh, I think, are we all set with next amp?
Um, I think for now, I think we can call them back up.
Okay.
As, unless you?
No, I'm good. I just didn't know if.
That's, that's fine by us, yeah. We're happy to, to be called forward when any questions arise.
I, I think that'd be useful.
Okay.
If you could do that. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
So clearing. I figure we just take these one at a time. The question that we asked previously was, we were interested in standards, putting standards in place for clearing of land for solar installation. We have a lot of forested land, we have some prime soils. We just heard that the cost of clearing land is actually prohibitive in some cases. The staff provided a few examples from Rhode Island and Georgia about how different places have dealt with this, and I wonder if people have thoughts on some of the options that have been presented later, or?
I actually really liked option three and four. And in three, it's being described as if a solar energy generating system is proposed on forest land in the Agriculture and Resource Protection District, up to 30% of the subject parcel may be cleared. My personal preference would be some sort of combination between option three and four. In three and four, it doesn't describe a percentage, it, it describes parcel adjacent to prime farmland or currently being used by farming, and that the clearing could be permitted under specific conditions. And those conditions essentially are that it not have a negative impact on the adjacent land. And I,
So, yeah, well, just related, Eric, I had a question about 30%. Is that just a number grabbed from the air?
Yeah, I don't think there's any specific magic to the 30%, but it was a starting point for discussion.
Yep.
Option, whoops.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I liked the idea of that percentage. In my mind, option three would be if, it would be like if not adjacent to prime farmland or land currently being used, up 2% of the subject parcel may be cleared, such that we're recognizing that we're not adding to adjacent farmland in the future, so we don't want to destroy a parcel of forested land that's adjacent and surrounded by forested land. But if the land is adjacent to open and cleared land, that there be a mechanism to allow for more clearing there, with the understanding that it makes sense to add additional cleared land next to land that is already currently cleared. So that's, I liked that idea.
Okay. And you had mentioned three and four, kinda caught your eye. And I had circled, I liked the idea of four without the third bullet, the and possibly, you know, without having to put on an impact fee. But I think, again, changing the wording on option three could get us the same, more or less what we're asking in option four.
Well, my understanding is, are, so Mr. Sayer, are you suggesting both three and four?
Well,
Could be.
Combining them, yeah, so that allows to say that it makes sense.
Not adjacent, yeah, yeah.
Right. It makes sense to clear more land if it's already adjacent to cleared land. If the subject property is not adjacent to cleared land, it, it makes sense to prioritize the forested nature of the parcel rather than the open nature of the adjacent parcel. That's sort of where I'm at, anyway.
Other thoughts on clearing?
I agree with, with him on that.
Any questions for the next amp guys on clearing? Nope. Okay. The next item was related to prime soils, and we want to protect them. Staff, again, provided a couple of options that, again, stack on top of each other, potentially. Thoughts from the board?
All right, if no one's gonna talk, you guys are gonna hear me a lot.
Yeah.
In, in this sense, in, in the previous one, I preferred options that were less restrictive. I think when it comes to prime soils, we already have so, we, we already have such a limited quantity of prime soils that my preference, or my inclination would be to have a stricter protection of those. So I, I, I sort of tended towards this option one, that the least productive agricultural soils shall be considered first for the development, unless it can be demonstrated to the planning board that, you know, the non-prime farmland is not available on the subject property. Siting the project on a non-prime farmland present on the subject property would significantly reduce the project's ability to operate successfully, the proposed site. Not necessarily these parameters, but that if something is going to be built on prime soils, there needs to be a really good reason why it has to be built there and not someplace else on the property. And to sort of piggyback off my last, although, although Megan did this, under option two, she said in addition to option one, I do like the idea that if we're gonna disturb, if, if prime soils are to be disturbed, they should be left on-site. That, that should be part of the plan, that any, any soils disturbed should, should not be taken off-site. So, in, in this instance, I, I really leaned towards option one and two as a more restrictive encroachment on, on prime soils. I guess, for better or worse, but I, I feel like we can encroach on the, on the, the forest land a bit more than the, than the prime soils.
So it says earlier that these are generally 20-year, like, lifelong, or life of the project. Would storing prime soils for 20 years change them from being prime soils, or is that?
I don't know. That's a question we, we'd have to ask.
Yeah, I have exactly the same. My first thought is, once you disturb a soil, dig it up, and you store it somewhere, what happens to that?
I think in looking at some of the options, I think if you were to scrape it all up and put it in a pile, it's certainly not gonna be the same 20 or 30 years from now. But if you're able to keep it in place, mow it a couple times a year, maybe even graze animals on it periodically, I think it could be maintained at its, the best it can be over that period of time. And it could be maintained very well if they even added organic matter to it.
Under the panels?
Yes, yeah. You'll have to disturb some on, you know, where a roadway gets placed, but try to keep it in place to the greatest extent practical might be a.
So I guess to me, that, that's very different from disturbance and storage, right?
I agree.
That there's minimizing disturbance, which is what you were describing, and then there's disturbing it and storing it. I just, I, I would like to know more about what that process looked like, and what it did to soil, if we were to go that direction. I agree with the sentiment, but I just want to know if it's actually viable.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. There's no point in making a developer sort of set something aside if 20 years from now, what they've set aside is no longer viable.
Right. And if, if the developer can't sell that as loam or topsoil, I think they'd probably prefer to leave it in place rather than pick it up, stockpile it, and then spread it, you know, just keep it where it, where it is.
Yeah, I mean, i- if it's being removed, I, I would not at any point be in favor of them selling that as loam. I, I would say, at the very least, it needs to be redistributed on the, on the site, you know, if, if not stored per se in a pile, but, you know, like,
You know, maybe in the prime soil, we, in a, if it's determined prime soil, that we would want the type of panel that would allow most of the soil to say, stay in place.
And they can be installed with minimal impact. I mean, they're sitting on a post that may be six or eight inches in diameter. Some of them are even screwed into the ground.
So, yeah, I guess then for me, what I actually like is the second clause of option two combined maybe with option four, which is citing on, you know, pile-driven ballast block footing, and then having plans for topsoil maintenance seem like better options. I just, yeah, I don't understand that first clause of option two.
I, I would agree. I think adding that piece of option four would be important into anything we're doing, that if the goal is that we want to maintain the long-term viability of the soils,
Yeah.
then we would want to see a plan for, for that topsoil maintenance.
As far as the storing goes, I don't think that's anything we really want to look at, or consider.
So minimizing the disturbance, maintaining that soil so it remains viable for agriculture in the future.
Does anybody have thoughts on option three, putting a coverage limit over prime farmland?
Nope. I'd rather go with the, leave it existing, that we just discussed myself.
Yeah, my preference would not be to allow for sort of a carte blanche percentage that can just be developed. I would want it, that any percentage being developed requires demonstration that it is the only viable place to be developed. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess, would you put it in combination, though?
My preference would be not to, because if we were to say that something, oh, I see what you're saying. So you have to demonstrate that this is the only place you can do it, and further, only a certain percentage of it can be developed. Is that what you're saying?
That would certainly be a restrictive, would restrict the impacts on prime soil.
My fear there is that we tip the bounds so far that we would restrict the farm owners or landowners' ability to, to reap the benefit from.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Kinda, I don't want to tie a, a landowner's hands and say.
You know, this landowner might have only prime soil, but it's not, you know.
Right.
Doesn't mean you can't still use the prime soil and also use solar.
It just needs to be demonstrated that that is the only place on that, on that parcel that, that can be built, yeah.
Okay.
That's my preference, anyway. I don't know.
Sort of a, an avoid and minimize standard, as much as feasibly possible, similar, similar to how we look at wetland impacts, I think. First, try to avoid it, and then if you can't avoid it, explain why, and try to minimize the impacts to that particular resource.
Yeah, I think that's a good, no, I think that's a good analogy, the way, the way we sort of look at wetlands, yeah.
Yep. Any more comments on soils?
One more thing.
Yes.
How about going the other way, in the sense of a farmer has a, an accident of some sort, and becomes incapacitated where he can't farm at all. So he builds the grid system. Is there gonna be, the grid system gonna be used as a land bank for future, so that that can go back to farming?
Well, I think if we're leaving the prime soil as much as we can as is, that he would be able to go back to farming.
Right.
That would be a great, you know, the best-case scenario. Good point.
I think a lot of it will come down to the economics of those land uses 20 or 30 years from now at the end of the project. If it's still more profitable to do a, a new solar project, they may be back in front of a planning board looking at that. Or if there's a real shortage of water in the Midwest, and a shortage of food, and a need for local foods, maybe the economics tip back towards agriculture.
Okay, moving on, 'cause we do want to get through these and then hear from the public. Ecosystem wildlife, thoughts on those options? Again, what, the question we posed was.
And I'm a fan of the option one, including a summary of any potential impacts. That, at that point, you know, the impact would determine whether or not it got approved. Or is that not stringent enough?
No, I, I, I agree. I do like this idea from option two stating that any land disturbed during construction shall be replanted with native crop cover. I don't know if we want to say to provide pollinator habitat, although that is incredibly important. We want to say to promote pollinator habitat, something of that effect. I would like that a lot more if land disturbed, are we saying they've, they've built their sort of road in there, and now they have to go plant it over, right? I mean, like, what, what does that mean, right?
Yeah, 'cause if they're disturbing the land to put the post in or something, they can't replant it.
Yeah, they can't.
It's being used for the installation.
Right, exactly. Right, exactly. But I do, but I do like in option two this idea that that if something is disturbed and it's not, and it is feasible to replant, that 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 should be done, that it should be done utilizing native species as opposed to non-native species. I don't like the idea of the last and it's an obnoxious, we control plan shall be submitted at the time of application. I think we have so many invasive weed species that it would, I'm not sure it would be feasible to require them to mitigate them all.
And I'm just not sure of the situation where, you know, in this type of area where they would be disturbing land that could be replanted, why would they disturb it, I guess?
Yeah.
I mean, I could see an instance where you disturb the land, moving things into place, at which point then less desirable weeds could move in and then you have degradation of the native habitat. But I think if we require replanting over those disturbed areas, then that should mitigate.
This is making me think, too. It's possible, it's possible that a landowner, specifically a farmer, could have land that's currently being tilled and worked that is proposed as a site. And in that instance, there wouldn't be any vegetation that's removed, but we certainly wouldn't want to leave that as bare soils. I mean, that's going to be the fastest way to have, you know, like 48 acres of wild mustard, you know, under every panel within three weeks, you know. So maybe, maybe we could think about how do we define what land disturbed would need to be replanted, but also think about the possibility of saying, or if the land in question is not currently covered with vegetation, that it be planted.
I think to the comments from the gentleman from next amp about the possibility of agriculture underneath panels, I think we need to consider that as well as that native crop cover. I don't think it is, but that would be a desirable use of, that could be a desirable use of that land, right?
Yeah, I'd be a big fan of that, you know, because that works, you know, it's both ways for the farmer.
Right, so our ordinance needs to not exclude that possibility.
I agree 100%.
I think maybe the development and implementation of a vegetative cover plan in an instance like that, so that the landowner or farmer could work out what works best for them. And if they simply want it to be seeded over with something, then it can be done with grasses, if that, native grass, if that's the case. Or if they are looking at the possibility of utilizing that land, that that be an option and it just be that be included in the plan.
It could be different for every farmer, whether it's corn, potatoes, strawberries, who knows?
Right, the idea is you just, the idea is I would think we would want to avoid leaving bare land open for extended periods of time is sort of just really, I mean, that in and of itself can degrade the soils, and that's really not what we're after.
We could certainly find some examples that would cover either like native species, pollinators through agricultural use or grazing of some kind and propose that. It sounds like those are, those are key ideas that the board seems to have consensus that should be incorporated.
Yeah, I think so.
But allow for some kind of range of flexibility between those two ideas is what I'm hearing.
Yep.
It sounds like we're all kind of on the same, on the same goal.
Yeah, under that item.
Next item, total lands area. We had talked about not wanting to clear the entire ag zone and cover it with solar panels. There are some options given by, examples and options given by staff. I wonder how people are feeling about this.
One option.
There is one option, which is essentially to look within a one-mile radius and limit the amount of area covered by solar panels in that one-mile radius.
I, the idea of the 50 acres, if 50 acres or more of solar energy generating systems have been constructed or have received planning board approvals in the study area, the planning board must find that the proposed solar energy generating system will not materially alter the stability of the overall land use pattern. If in other places in the ordinance, we tend to use percentage cover to describe things, and that we do that throughout chapter 60, it would be my preference that the board land on a percentage that we feel is appropriate rather than a number of acres within a study area. To say, you know, within this many, this many square miles, a certain percentage has already been developed, then we preclude it. But other than that, I think it's reasonable to say that we want to limit the density of these things in.
Right, you don't want to cover the ag zone in panels.
So, anybody know off the top of their head how many acres are in a circle with one-mile radius?
Oh, within what? Sorry.
One-mile radius, it's pi r squared, right, so. It's 3.14159 square miles. I don't know how many acres that is.
3.14 square miles, you said?
Yep.
I don't know the acres per square mile, but I think I can get there by, you said a one-mile radius, so 5,280 feet divided by two, or mile radius, so.
Mile radius, pi r squared is the area, right?
Five, two, eight, oh.
I don't know whether my, I'm just trying to get an idea of how many acres and what percentage 50 acres would be. It feels like it's going to be pretty low, but.
I believe it would be right around 2,000 acres, slightly over, in a.
So 50 acres is an incredibly low density.
Very.
Going with a percentage.
50 is pretty small.
Yeah, we might be better off to go with a percentage.
So a square mile is 640 acres, that makes sense.
But this is more than a square mile, right? We're talking.
We're talking, well, it's three times that, yes, so it is, it's 2,000.
So if you said, you know, what do you want to see? How much of 2,000 acres do you want to see? You know, it's a percentage.
And right now, we know that the agricultural zone overall is right around 20,000 acres. 25% of that is cleared and about 75% of it, or slightly over 70% of it is forested. So if that gives a sense of the existing land cover anyways.
20,000 acres, you said roughly?
About 20,000 acres, yeah.
And how much of it is open?
Only about 20, 25% of it. Over 70% of it is forested.
6,000 acres is open, 5,000 acres is open.
Six.
That's only. That's 25%. 25% of the ag zone at this point is open space.
Yeah, I guess I'd need to, I would really want to hear from folks that are using that land about what kind of density is they think. That's where I'm really, I'm going to want some feedback. I'm not sure I want to.
Throw out 10%.
Throw out a number without hearing from.
Yeah, I agree. I think we can also think about clearing costs there, too, right? Because that might just be a natural governor.
Sounds like in the ag zone, for this to work, they're not going to want it clear anyways. So if we got 25, yeah, 5,000 acres now that are clear.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Grid connections, anybody have? We heard about the need for three-phase for smaller projects.
It sounds like they wouldn't, they wouldn't be looking to extend amenities anyways, correct?
Right, and.
It just costs money.
Right, and if.
To me, this, to me, this one makes sense because it's in line with the rest of our ordinance. Any other, whether we're talking about homeowners or building private homes, when we look at doing subdivisions, we're supposed to consider available infrastructure. So we're asked to consider available infrastructure on every other type of project described in chapter 60. So it makes sense that we would have a similar language here. Create continuity, I think.
Agreed.
Agreed. I think that's what it should be.
Thoughts? Yep.
I know when we deal with more traditional development projects, like sewer is one that we expect a response from the Auburn Sewer District, that there's capacity to serve the development. Maybe something from the utility just explaining that there is capacity to serve that development would help.
I think that would be helpful.
Yes, agreed. Next item we wanted feedback on or help with was impact, negative impacts on agriculture and including pasturing animals within solar installations.
I like the idea of option two, where option one more or less, you know, was putting out grazing, where option two is including but limited to heparis grazing or handpicked crops. It kind of gives more options, if I'm reading that correctly.
Does anybody feel like this is an or or an and situation between option one and two? I agree with you about option two, it's very open. There are aspects of option one that I like. Particularly identifying measures to manage vegetation.
Yeah, you could take out what's underlined as a pollinator-friendly manner and including but not limited to, yeah, instead of just allowing for the area for grazing, allow the area for heparis grazing or handpicked out crops. You almost could tie that.
Or just the co-mingle. That whole co-mingle phrase, starting from co-mingle.
I like the flexibility available in option two, however, what I do like from option one is that there will be a plan. So an option, I would, I would really love to see option two reading something like the solar energy generating system design. The operator of the solar energy generating system shall develop a plan or shall submit a plan that prioritizes the ability to co-mingle agriculture and energy generation. If they, ask them to put it in writing, oftentimes we say, you shall do this, and so.
Accountability.
Right, there's a lack of accountability, but if we, but I think simply by asking them to say, okay, so we want you to prioritize that. Please give us a plan of how you plan to do that. It creates a certain level of accountability there, and I like that.
Okay, do you want to call it a vegetation management plan or just a plan?
No, I think, well, because we already have vegetative management sort of picked up elsewhere.
The soils, yep.
And so we've run into this in the past in chapter 60 where we come back to things in different parts of an ordinance, and it creates confusion for developers, for the board when we review. So if there's a vegetative plan already being described in a different section, and what we're really looking for here is not about the vegetation, but really a plan that allows for the flexibility of using the land concurrently for agriculture. If that's amenable to the operator and the landowner, then it should stick just to that.
Sort of agricultural compatibility plan or something along those lines.
Well, the idea that we want it to prioritize the ability to co-mingle, okay? I don't think we want to mandate that it co-mingles because that might not be something that the landowner or, and if the landowner happens to be a farmer, wants to necessarily do. But that there be a plan that prioritizes the ability to do that, right?
Yeah, I think we're all looking for something that's going to help the farmer.
Yeah, and you're going to have flexibility. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, if you're a landowner, if you're simply a landowner, this is nice. It looks like additional revenue from your land. If you're a farmer, it doesn't, won't necessarily automatically generate additional income above and beyond what you have gotten on that land. What it does is it creates a stable income. And that, that's what's going to be important, I think, and I'd like to hear from the folks involved in agriculture. My assumption is that that's what's going to be sort of nice about a project like this is that farming can be incredibly unpredictable. So to be able to diversify part of your land and generate a predictable income from that set parcel or portion of land would be nice. But in doing that, I don't want to restrict the landowner or the farm operator as to how they do that. Yes, we want there to be the ability to co-mingle agriculture, but I don't think we want to mandate that. Really what we're looking for is how do we allow for a farmer to generate that income that allows them to continue to farm, which is quite frankly risky business, a little more comfortably because they're able to generate some secured income.
Agree 100%.
I think I have enough so we can shell something out as, that's good feedback. I think we can draft something that accomplishes that.
Okay, great. The last item, or second to last, would be setbacks and lot coverage standards. So Eric, you were talking about buildings versus structures?
Typically, we're talking about buildings in impervious area like driveways or parking lots when we're talking about lot coverage. The setbacks, you know, the same setbacks may be appropriate as far as lot coverage. It's just a very different project than what we're typically applying a lot coverage standard to. If we applied it to the driveways, if we applied the lot coverage standard to the driveways in any actual impervious surfaces created, but didn't count the surface area of the panels where the water would run underneath and eventually make its way into the ground, I think that could probably work with the existing standards, as long as we're clear on how it was going to be applied, so it was predictable. On most of these, I think you'd be really hard pressed to get to a 20 or 30% number with a solar project because it's so, so little impervious area actually created on a fairly large area.
Yep.
I would agree. I think as long as that's clearly defined for this context, what does that mean for the context of a project like this, then that would work.
And we could probably pull, just as an example, some of the projects that we're seeing now and. and just get the total impervious area off the stormwater, maybe the one we reviewed tonight as an example of how, how, it's just such a very, it's a very low percentage of impervious area for, for a large parcel.
And when we look at setback for buildings, when we're looking at two buildings on a parcel, that setback actually applies to the two buildings within the parcel as well. So I think we're going to need, just having seen the photos, I think we're going to need to rethink what that looks like. I don't think it would be reasonable to require a specific setback between two panels that are side by side.
That feels, that feels super inefficient.
Right, I think really what we would be focused on is not setbacks between structures internal to the project, but setbacks along the
The whole project itself.
Yeah, the outer boundaries of the project, and that's... You, you figure they're going to have rows wide enough that they can drive their truck down to service these things?
Not between every panel, though.
Right, but, so by default, you've got at least, I mean, I don't know what kind of service trucks they're using, but I would assume a ten to twelve-foot row
Yeah, the actual access.
In between each row of panels, and then with the rows, the panels themselves, we don't want, you know, fifteen feet between each panel.
The setbacks don't apply to the panels themselves.
I was just looking at, I know in the industrial zone, we do have that setback between buildings, but I think that term "structure" versus "building" may come into play. We can keep that in mind in drafting it so that the, the fire department's going to expect a twenty-foot access road to get to some of the more remote areas of the site, but not between every panel. We can draft it so that, that can work. I think that structure versus building definition will probably be part of that.
So this also feels like a, a moment where we could ask the gentleman from Nexamp, what generally is the spacing you have between rows of panels?
The spacing between the rows of panels can vary depending on the topography, so it's really driven by shading impact. You don't want to have one row of panel shading the row of panels behind it, depending on what time, time of year and the angle of the sun. So yes, we're going to have a, a, you know, an inter-row between those two rows of modules that would certainly be wide enough for a light-duty maintenance vehicle to pass through, lawn mowing equipment and so forth. I think, you know, typically what we've seen in essentially every case where a community is talking about setback requirements, it's specifically yard setbacks, so looking at the property lines and considering setbacks from those property lines and not from the intermediate structures that are part of the project itself. And then the, the fire department would certainly want to weigh in on the access road coming into the site, but again, not on the intermediate infrastructure between individual rows because generally speaking, first responder is going to be staying outside of the solar project itself anyway, at a safe distance, so just, you know, if, if a project was, was on fire, they would just monitor it from outside the perimeter of the fence. There's shutdown equipment outside of the fence that they would be able to have access to, to shut the system offline from the utility grid. So when, typically when we've talked about dimensions, it's, it's been relative to the property line and the first instance of the structure as a whole versus individual structures that make up the solar project.
Great, thank you.
And we, we do have a building-to-building setback requirement in the industrial zone, we don't have that in the agricultural zone.
I think we have one last comment here about installation of solar for their own electricity use. Thoughts, comments on that?
Yeah, I think we absolutely have to allow an individual landowner to put up panels for themselves. I think it would be unreasonable to, to limit that when it's not limited in any other zone, and it's not currently limited, so.
That's...
I agree.
Agree a hundred percent.
That's how we've structured the overall solar ordinance, so I think the big question is whether or not that stays the same here. Sounds like it probably would.
Any more thoughts?
No, I'd love to hear what, some of the folks in the audience have to say.
Exactly what I was going to do, I was going to invite anybody up that would like to give us their thoughts on what they've heard tonight or other ideas about solar in the ag zone, we'd love to hear them. If you come up, just state your name and address.
Of course.
I'm Bill Sylvester, I live at eleven twenty-eight Riverside Drive, Auburn, Maine. Got some land in the ag zone, some in the residential. My comment about ag land and ag solar systems and farms, they're not, it's not a farm, doesn't look like any farm I ever saw, they're pretty ugly. If that, if it's a great asset to our country and electricity, that's, you've got to consider that sort of thing. But that, it isn't compatible with wildlife. It changes the water flow, you can leave the contour the way it is and still have a solar field, it'll even it out some. Our warming, heating is a big issue with these things. You can't go touch one of those things when it's ninety degrees and have a comfortable feeling, where if you go out and touch some grass, a weed in your garden, a tree in the forest, it's cool. There's a big heating process there. The, the story about Massachusetts with sixty percent reduction or sixty percent of the original capacity if you put a solar field out, that, that's research, that's academic, that isn't what really happens. You don't know what you're going to do when you start putting big solar fields out there. How's that for some ideas? I do think that in, in Lutze, the unorganized towns, there has, have been a few solar things in there, and what they've asked for is a condition, is when they're decommissioned, that land has to go back to what it was before. Now, in the brochures country, that would be back to a forest, in an agricultural area, it would be back to some type of agriculture. And certainly on the higher quality soils, that should happen, it should go back to what it was. In five years, if this thing isn't popular, it, it should be restored to what it was. And it, it certainly, you don't want to take the topsoil away, you leave it there, and it, it won't deteriorate. You put the proper nutrients back in it, it'd be farmland again. So that's, that's my thought about it. And I, I don't know what you had here, it sounds like you had a great plan that Megan or somebody had been working on, and that, that's a great start. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
How you doing? Dave Bell, Riverside Drive, Auburn. As a producer and talking about solar panels, I, I believe, as Mr. Seer said, it's a, an option for an income as we all look as, as producers, we look at it as an income. I think it's a, it's a good possibility. I think with the the three-phase power, I think that's going to limit a lot of the possibilities in the ag zone, so I think we're, it might limit where we go with it, so. And as far as farmland, as opposed to the forestry, I think we could, we could encroach the forest a little bit if, if that's where you needed to be, keep it from being shaded, I think we can work with that, I think that's a good possibility. That's all I've got to say.
Anyone else like to comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board.
Well, I, I, I think, I, I don't know, I feel sort of, I guess I feel a little more confident about where we were going. It sounds like we weren't, we weren't so far off track. I think Mr. Sylvester brings up an important point about when, when the land is decommissioned, when the project is decommissioned, what does the land look like? We know that we have more land forested in that zone now than we had sixty years ago. Or longer than that, actually. That we've lost open agricultural land. So my inclination is to say that I, I'm not sure that I would want to say all land that was cleared, that was forested land, must go back to being forested land. I think I would be quite adamant in saying that all land that was previously used as, as farmland needs to be returned to a state that can be farmed, but Mr. Sylvester does bring up an important point. It also doesn't mean that if, you know, we allow three thousand acres of, of wooded land to be cleared, that we don't want any of that to go back to wooded land either, and so it's definitely some food for thought.
Again, I think they both brought up valid points, and I think by staff, you know, continuing to, to go in the route we're, we're going, will give us a better read, you know, on what we're actually trying to, trying to do. You know, without this type of option for some of these farmers, you know, we're worried about what the land's going to look like in twenty years after it's decommissioned. We also need to worry about what the land's going to look like in the next twenty years without this option. There's, the farming's going away.
I agree, it, it seems a wonderful way to landbank open area instead of letting it continue to be more forested area.
I think, I think I have enough that Megan and I can work on drafting an ordinance, and I, it's, I guess, good to hear that sort of line of thought where, you know, helping keep the farmer financially viable keeps the land in agriculture too. You know, if, if somebody stops maintaining the rest of their land because they can't afford to farm, we lose the farmland anyways. So even without the solar project.
Okay. So I noticed a hand back there. Did you?
I just didn't know if, uh...
Can you? Yeah.
Just, just wanted to add a little bit extra, having heard comments, discussion from the board and comments from the public. As it relates to forested portions of the zoning district, and this is something that we've encountered in, in Massachusetts, where we're really confronting land use issues as a pretty significant topic, as solar continues to proliferate across the state. Similar to the land use percentages in this district, Massachusetts as a whole is pretty close in terms of the percent forested. The state as a whole is about sixty to seventy percent forested. Interestingly, what, what it, what it actually severely lacks is, is meadow habitat, and so meadow habitat represents less than two percent of the entire state's land use. And so one thing that we've, we've had discussions about and looked at is, as we're thinking about the future and climate change and, and how our communities and our ecosystems react to climate change and, and deploy resilient ecological systems to deal with that. I would just ask the board to consider, and it was just discussed, so I think it's already being discussed, I just wanted to sort of reiterate, the consideration of the requirement that a site be, be replanted with, with trees after the conclusion of a project versus, you know, the, the consideration for the ecological value of an alternative ecosystem there that maybe presents some, presents some diversity that was not existing prior at the site. As we've seen, certain species of trees will just get wiped out as, as certain diseases pass through an area, and so to the extent that we can move away from a more homogeneous ecosystem to a more diverse one, there might be some value to that. And so we've, we've had projects where we've worked with communities that have required a replanting of a certain mix of tree species, and that's fine, I mean, that's, that's something that a developer should be able to do. But I think it is worth consideration as to whether that is perhaps the right thing to do or the right thing to require versus allowing for some more flexibility. And, and I think some of the intent here that's been discussed is if, if a portion of land is converted from forest land to a site that would be amenable to a solar project, is it then also more amenable to agricultural use once that solar project is removed from that site, leaving it as it is in a sort of just ground cover state but nothing more? So certainly some, some good consideration to be given there. And on the soils side, I just wanted to, to provide some context there as well. In the presentation, we had that opening slide that you saw where it's a picture of a project site. That was a three or four hundred acre farm. Almost the entire farm was identified as soils of statewide significance, including that location. If you asked that farmer about that specific location, they were, they would say it's the worst part of their farm that they had. It was essentially zero productivity, heavily sandy soils, they were getting no yield out of it. And so it was a great location for them, but if you relied on the soils mapping, you would have been guided to potentially saying that that's where a solar project should be steered away from. So just thinking kind of how you evaluate this, what tools you use to evaluate prime, prime soils, soils of significance, and whether the, the map soils are really the best metric for that. We've seen a number of cases where what's mapped on a GIS map is not what is reality on the ground. And so I think there was, there was mention in the staff report here of providing, as in, as opposed to that, providing a soils analysis. Soils analyses are something we need to provide to DEP anyway in the permitting process, and so I think if the board decides that there is an interest to identify and then provide a plan for either working with prime soils or working around prime soils, I would definitely advocate for the tool being used there as being an actual site-specific soil analysis versus just relying on the soil mapping to provide that answer, just to try to get as realistic of, of an outcome as possible. I, I would also echo the comments from the public about soils should absolutely stay on site, they should be, get co-mingled with the finished surface that is prepped once the construction is complete, should absolutely not be removed from the site. The best thing for, for these soils in terms of value is to do nothing to them, so to the extent that we can minimize the disturbance to them, leave them on site, and let them simply accumulate nutrients over the next twenty to forty years, I would think the soil that you're left with after the fact is going to be, if anything, more valuable than the soil that you started with. So just wanted to add those couple comments. I don't think I had, had any others. Just at a very high level, the setback requirements, I think, just looking at the, I don't know if those are yard-specific or building-specific setbacks that were mentioned in the industrial zone. setbacks that were mentioned in the industrial zone. But we would, we would certainly advocate for thinking through meaningful setbacks, specifically from public ways, just to make sure that the community impact is, is taking into account the surrounding community, and would expect a, certainly a front yard setback that would be relatively significant, just to make sure you don't have these projects looming large right, right on the roadside. And, and happy to, as this ordinance continues to evolve, provide more examples of where we've seen other communities land in terms of the appropriate setbacks that they've implemented to, to locate these projects and their communities.
Where is Next Amp's home, where are you out of?
Home office is in Boston right now. We started on the North Shore of Massachusetts, and we have offices in Maine, and Rhode Island, and New York, and other areas around the country.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, at this point. Oh, is there another?
Hello, my name's Roger Garcia. I was the last dairy farm on Penley Con Road. And I purchased the land on Riverside Drive. And I traded, Father and I done the business. We traded the farm, and he got the farm, and I got the land back. My father cleared all that land off, 90 percent of it alone. And I'm trying to keep the farm together, and this would help me a lot. I've got a young fella that started working for me. I don't have any kids. I've never been married. Started working for me. I'd like to pass that piece of land down to him. And when I go and my girlfriend goes, I want that money that I, I get from it going to a trust fund to help him. That's, would help us out a lot. And part of that hill that they want to put on, it's a nightmare of hay. If you go up, you're, you're trapped to lift something here. That's how steep some of it is. And it probably be the best thing for it and no one to get hurt from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, I guess there are three more things that we need to talk about. Two of them can be lumped together, and that's how to involve the Ag Committee and the Conservation Commission. And then, the, then we need to talk about, okay, what's our next step? Do we want to proceed to a public hearing or? Or not? Now, so, in the past, I'm not, when the planning board has involved, and this is for, question for other members of the board, when the planning board has involved other bodies such as the Conservation Committee and the Ag Committee, how has that been done? And do people have thoughts on whether now is the time to do that, or when a good time to do that would be?
To answer the first part of your question, it's done, it's been done more than one way. The board has had joint meetings with other boards or committees or commissions. In addition, it's also happened such that the board felt it was important to provide a working document, and so drafted something, and then rather than having a joint meeting, sent that document to the relevant board committee or commission, seeking feedback. So, those are the two basic ways I think that the planning board has involved other entities within the city.
Okay, thank you. Any thoughts from anyone on the timing? Is, so, it feels to me if we have a joint meeting, that the answer might be different than if we want to send them some kind of draft document and have them respond.
So, is the staff?
Next up for staff to take notes from this and draw up a draft?
To, to, yes, to draft something based on the feedback tonight that ideally we would schedule for a public hearing next month. But that doesn't mean you have to act on it. If this, you know, you could accept public feedback, and if there's still a need for change, it could come back in a, in a following month.
So, okay, I'm, I'm trying to understand the order here. So, that would be, you would, we would have a draft, we could have a public hearing on that draft, and then we could send it to the Ag Committee and the Commission, the Conservation Commission for comment at that point?
I think if we, if we do that, then we'd want to get the council to buy into that, that kind of a schedule. The ordinance really, you could certainly invite them to be a part of your meeting. But the ordinance really requires that you guys eventually make a recommendation to the council. You certainly could solicit feedback, but then you'd probably have to come back to you.
Yeah, no. Yeah. I understood completely that then we would have to take their feedback, incorporate it, and then move something to council.
Yep. I think it's either that or recommend that the council seek feedback from those committees. That would be the, a third option, I guess.
So, as I think about this, I understand that while we are, there, there's no impetus for us to rush anything. Neither do I think we should rush anything. I also recognize that landowners in the ag zone will best be able to take advantage of this if there are clear answers available by the time that the program is initiated. And if I remember correctly, it is rolling out this summer. Without knowing more, somewhere around here could mean June or July. And so, I would think that it is, in an effort for us to do, to meet the goals that we are trying to meet, which is to allow for landowners to utilize this, particularly and preferably for farmers to be able to utilize this, we need to have a timeline that best allows for that to happen. Something that we have done in the past is had a workshop on an item and a public hearing on that item in the same night. And I'm wondering if this might not be an appropriate time for us to workshop the draft that staff develops for the next meeting as a joint workshop. And then proceed with the, the public hearing, so that we are able to get feedback from the boards and commissions that we feel we need to get feedback from during that workshop prior to the, prior to the public hearing.
That seems like the fastest process to ensure that you're hearing from all those boards and still moving something along. I think you'd have to, we'd have to have an ordinance in place so that these projects could receive their approvals from the planning board either May, or possibly the second Tuesday in June would work. But I think after that, they'd miss the, the first round of the Public Utilities Commission.
So, yeah, that was my question. So, if we want to be out of this as a planning board by May, that means we have two planning board meetings.
Yeah, I think in order to take advantage of it, you'd almost have to be through the council process by May.
Through the council process by May?
The council, because the council will require a workshop and then two readings.
Yep. And we could try to workshop something.
Which means? The planning board then has to be done with it by April.
I think if you're not done in April, we could potentially have a second meeting in April, or else we'd probably miss the timeline for these types of projects.
Yeah, I hate to say that we have to be done by April. I don't think it's that we have to be done by April. It's that if we want members of our community to be able to take advantage of the first round with the, the Public Utilities Commission, then we need to develop a timeline that allow, if that's part of our priority, then we need to develop a timeline that allows for that.
I think the difference is the tax current drops after that from 26 down to 20 percent, if I remember right. So, it's still, it wouldn't eliminate a project, but there's more benefit in it, more room for the landowner to be paid in the first round.
As I understand it, aren't there also a limited number of possible projects within an area?
Yes, I think there is, but I don't know the exact.
So, my preference, okay, so, my preference really would be to workshop this prior to the next meeting, and that could be the date of the next meeting, that we also have our public hearing. And if at that time we feel we need more time, that is okay. I think it's important for us to exercise our due diligence. But I think we should try to set ourselves up such that if we feel comfortable moving forward, we can. And we can do so on a timeline that allows landowners in Auburn to take advantage of that first round. That's my personal preference.
So, a joint workshop would potentially?
Workshop and public on our regular meeting.
And we've done that at least once within the last, yeah, I think we've done that within the last three or four months, actually.
We had a workshop on it that preceded by a week, maybe, the actual meeting.
We had, well, we had a workshop here, but I mean, we've had a, I think we had a workshop.
We had the meeting with the Conservation Commission.
Right.
And that's what you're?
So, that would be, that would be an example of a model of how that could work for?
Yep.
So, that would be 5 o'clock, this would be 6, something like that, you're saying? Or whatever?
So, would you bring together then the Ag Committee and the Conservation Committee, Commission, and the planning board at that workshop?
I mean, that's a lot of people, but if those are the people we want to hear from, then those are the people we want to hear from. And I think we would have to commit to during that workshop, letting those two, members of those two groups really provide their input, and our role as a board in that workshop to be at, to ask clarifying questions of, about what they're saying, really give them the lion's share of that time. Because there'd be so many, but if, if we want to hear from?
And prior to that workshop, they would have time to review staff's makeup?
Yeah, we'd have to get that to them.
I mean, we would have to work, we'd have to work to get something to them soon.
Yep.
My assumption is that they would have access to it on Thursday, the way we all have access to it on the previous Thursday.
Yeah, and maybe get it a little sooner than that, just be in the whole ordinance, and they're not.
Because they may in fact want to meet prior to workshopping that.
Do we, do we have a lot on the board for next coming up?
Oh, yeah, I'm glad you asked that question. Yes. You have a,
I know, jumping ahead a little bit.
You do have a substantial, I think you have four projects at the next meeting. We could look at when the Conservation Commission meets next and try to schedule a workshop around their next meeting. I think that'll be later this month, next Tuesday? So, that's only a week from now. We wouldn't necessarily have the draft by then. So.
Okay, so, that sounds, so, trying to arrange for a workshop before our next meeting sounds like?
Unless you wanted to do like a 5 to 6 workshop, and then a 6 o'clock.
But we still have a full meeting even without that coming, even without adding this.
Yeah, no, that's what I mean, a 5 to 6.
We can shoot for that and then try to sort out the details here over the next few days. But we could, we could try to set that up for the next meeting. But I would just expect that you do have a heavy workload in addition to that at the next planning board.
Even without bringing that to it?
We could look at the, we're at the second Tuesday. We could look at the fourth Tuesday of this month. Conservation Commission meets next Tuesday, I guess. We could look at the following Tuesday for just a straight workshop, if you wanted.
Either way, we still have to have the public hearing on the ordinance in April.
In April, yep.
That mirrors off the public hearing we had tonight, you know, which is probably the same part. I don't think we'd, that would be taking up a lot of time.
No, I, I agree. I think staff's already developed a, a good draft. I think we've given the feedback that will help staff. I hope we have. I think staff's suggestion of having a special meeting workshop makes sense. It would give staff time to incorporate things.
You mean prior to the next meeting, or on a separate date?
On, I,
Either.
Either. I think it.
So, my concern about prior to the next meeting is then the planning board being able to incorporate any feedback and, along with staff. So, I would favor setting up.
Two weeks from tonight?
A separate date.
A separate date, yeah.
So, we could look, we could look at Tuesday, the 24th. That would be the fourth Tuesday. Or we could do one week before the planning board meeting, Tuesday, March, April 2nd. For a workshop.
31st, you mean?
31st? Yeah, sorry.
24th or 31st?
Yes.
That makes more sense.
Well, the 24th would give staff an extra week to, if there was more tweaking that came out of that joint meeting.
I think, yeah, whether the tweaking.
To get to us to our planning board meeting.
Whether the tweaking this time or the tweaking after that workshop, I think we'll be crunched on one of them. So, I think we could make either one work. Depending on how many changes come out of that workshop.
Oh, well, the next meeting's not till the 14th, so if you did it on the 31st, that still gives you two weeks.
Yeah, that would be, that would be really doable. That would be preferred.
The 31st sounds like the right. That gives you time to prepare.
Now.
Something now. It gives the time to get to the two groups. It gives the Ag Committee time to meet for a first time, potentially?
Possibly. Yeah, that sounds like the best option.
So.
We will try to set, let's look at the logistics of that tomorrow, and we'll try to make that happen.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you. So, our next item, we're still good on time, is moving on to discussion of backlots. Get a little introduction from staff?
Yeah, there's been a number of requests over a long period of time, and, and a number of requests recently regarding the ability to create a second. Generally, it's been a residential request, but the ability to create a second lot where a property has the lot size to meet the minimum standards for two parcels. Let's say the lot size is minimum is one acre, the parcel has over two acres, but it lacks the frontage to provide the required minimum frontage for a second lot. Our comprehensive plan does support moving towards more density-based standards rather than exact minimum lot shape or size standards, but to actually look at the overall parcel size rather than frontage or minimum depth, that kind of thing. At the February meeting, we talked about the creation of an ordinance for backlots. A lot of communities have them. The draft that we have for the board to look at tonight includes requirements that attempt to address the issues raised by the board at the last meeting and some sort of general standards that we saw in other example ordinances from other communities. I think it makes sense to take a look at the draft standards that we have and just get feedback. And then if this is something that the board says, we don't think this is a good idea, and we don't think it should move forward at all, that could be the end of it. Or if we need to make some adjustments and, and do a public hearing next time, we could move something forward for the, for the April meeting. There's three examples of backlots in the packet. You have an example where the front lot owns the, owns the land, and the backlot that's proposed just has an easement or a right-of-way to cross the front lot's land. You have an example where the backlot owns a strip of land. It looks like a right-of-way. It functions like a right-of-way, but they actually have fee ownership of it. And then you have an example where the, the right-of-way is actually shared ownership between the two. And then you have an example where the, the right-of-way is actually shared ownership between the two parcels. I think any of those could be options. I think you'd be more likely to see the one where one lot or the other owns the land and the other one has the easement or the right-of-way to cross over it. The requests that we've seen, as I said, have mostly been a residential lot owner looking to create another opportunity for another residential lot. The one exception to that is the, kind of the second example sketch that you were given, where we have a single-family home and an 18-hole disc golf course on the same parcel. We have somebody that would like to buy the whole property, live in the house and operate the disc golf course. But what we're finding is that the owner had a, had a mortgage at some point on the house and then over time kind of built the disc golf course. And now as it's changing hands, the residential mortgages cannot include the land that has the commercial use on it. And the commercial loans that would cover the value of a nearly half a million dollar house have a higher interest rate and it's just not feasible to buy the property, the entire property under a commercial loan. So that was one of the examples. And that really is the only example of one where we've had one potential back lot that would be a commercial use and one lot that would be a residential use. But I just thought that was worth, worth pointing out. The draft standards that we've provided would allow one back lot in any residential zoning district. Some of the feedback we heard raised concerns that it might not be appropriate to do this in an agricultural zone where it allowed for an increase in housing opportunities. The standards that we've suggested here, the six standards would be, one, that the minimum lot size is met for the zoning district where the lot is located. So really that would require that, were you not given that list of standards?
Good now.
Okay. Really that would require that in order for somebody to apply for a back lot, they have to have double the minimum lot size for that zoning district to create a second one. That a deeded right-of-way or fee ownership strip of land at least 40 feet wide is provided to allow permanent access from a public street to the back lot. Typically, if the driveway access is more than 150 feet long, the fire department's going to require 20 feet in gravel road surface. So a 40-foot right-of-way would allow for that gravel road surface or paved if they chose to pave it. And 10 feet on either side to push snow on without crossing, crossing outside the easement. The driveway is shared with the front lot. Or if a new driveway is proposed, it would have to meet the current cut and driveway spacing standards. I think that was something that the board raised as a concern, not to have driveways that are so close together that they create a safety hazard. Those are the existing standards in the ordinance for that. That the proposed use of each lot is permitted in the district or has received special exception approval from the Planning Board. This standard was really intended to have a discussion of whether or not this could be used in this recreational or commercial use situation. And I could also see, let's say, a business owner along Center Street using it to have their house behind their business or along another commercial strip, not necessarily just a residential use. That the proposed access drive meets the standards in NFPA 101. That's really that standard of allowing fire truck access, especially if the driveway's more than 150 feet. And there was a lot of examples where you're not allowed to use this type of a standard in subdivision setting. So the way we attempted to address that in the draft is just that the lot had to exist as of April 1st, 2020, before this was adopted, and that it could only be used once per parcel as it existed on that date, to not have somebody with five backlots over a 10-year period or something like that. With that, we're just looking for feedback on the general concept and then any specific standards and whether or not you think we've captured most of the concerns from the last meeting.
One question I have regarding the concept as laid out here in the draft ordinance is, this is described as lots in residential zoning districts. We have several, we have, we have lots of parcels in this city that are in more than one zone. And so as, as, as a concept map, this does not answer any questions around, is it the front lot that has to be in a residential zone? Does the entirety of the front lot have to be in a residential zone? Does the entirety of what would become the back lot need to be in the res, in a residential zone? Do they need to be in the same type of residential zone? Or can they be in different residential zones as long as it is a residential zone? And so on and so forth. They could just keep coming, right? But as a concept, whatever we do has to take into account the unique nature of Auburn. And one of the things that you see in Auburn is parcels that are in more than one zone.
Especially in our residential sort of strips along rural roadways.
Yes.
Yeah, I think the proposed use of each lot has to be permitted in the district. I guess the way I would see that working in the strip is if you had enough, let's say you had a rural residential lot that there's 450 feet deep of residential zoning and then the back is Ag Zone. If you created the back lot, any new residential use would have to be in the residential district. But you could have a situation where you have, now you have a residential lot and then behind it you have a lot with a residential portion and then back acreage in the Ag Zone. But we'll have to be clear, so that's not used in a way that we're not thinking of.
Well, the, the first thing we'd have to do is decide whether or not that's something we want, right? So, you know what I mean? And so we won't be able to answer those questions until we, we start sort of getting specific about those types of lots.
Well, we want to look at this as a tool to build on a lot that's not in...
Right, I, I guess, so what sort of raises a flag about the, the example that's given is that those areas that are stripped zone, a lot of them don't have public utility. And the idea is that we don't, we haven't extended some of those strips. We've been asked to extend them. We don't because the, the public utility, i.e. water and sewer, don't exist. So it would seem to be a step backwards in terms of our general policy to say, well, you can't build next to your neighbor, but you can build behind your neighbor, you know? And, and so I think that's where the, moving forward as a concept, we have to decide, we really have to think about it, is it that both parcels are predominantly residential? What type of residential areas do we want to see that happen in? I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that what we would do would preclude that. I think we just have to look at what the implications are. And if we move forward and we say, that's fine, and we think that's appropriate, then that's fine, and we think that's appropriate. But there are questions that we have to raise.
So what, I, I guess it's related is this disc golf course example where the back lot use is actually not to build a house, but it's to do something... So it's sectioning off the house so that someone can buy that in a reasonable way, but not necessarily building on the second back lot. And so that's another thing, and I think it's related to what you're talking about.
Well, do we want it, do we want it to be a tool to allow for the mitigation of sort of these, not, not that that's not a non-conformance, but do we, is it okay for us to say that this could be used as a mitigation tool to take, to, to eliminate some, some of those situations that have arisen? Or do we not think it's an appropriate tool to mitigate those things? So, you know, when I think about the disc golf course, that's the decision I think we have to make there.
I agree. I have another thought, and I'm not sure how this backlots ordinance does or does not apply. But we have talked about, and one of the examples you used here is this Lake Street, Park Street, Hotel Road area. There's that big chunk of property. I don't know what the zones are for what's inside. But talking about infill and how that's actually smart development, how would a backlot ordinance such as this actually affect that?
Yeah, I think it, it does allow for some infill in existing residential areas where the, you know, they've sort of developed the lots over time based on the minimum frontage, but the lot size exceeds the minimum by at least double suburban residential and rural residential, I think, is most of that triangle that you referred to. So there's either a half acre or a one acre minimum, I think, through most of that. But you do see a lot of lots that meet the minimum suburban residential standard. They have 150 feet of frontage, but they're over an acre and the minimum lot size is, is a half an acre.
So I guess part of my question is, is what's, what's the planning angle here for if the idea from a city planning point of view is to actually fill that whole space, but we restrict this?
Yeah, I think those larger lots like that, you'd really have to be thinking about new roadways to fill a space that large. I think this is more, more infill where, not for those really large lots to do a subdivision or anything. It's more the individual lot owners to decide to increase their, their utility of their lot by just one, one parcel.
Okay, so, and so this wouldn't necessarily block a subdivision, then?
The way this is written, it could only be done once on a lot that exists as of today, essentially.
Right, so the larger lots...
Still be looking at a traditional subdivision or a condo development, planned unit development for those really large lots to...
And in order to do that, they need frontage?
They, they do, but I think the, the comprehensive plan does suggest that we move away from that kind of a frontage measurement. I think this is one small step in that direction. But I think to really get there, there would need to be further, further discussion and a bigger change that starts to eliminate frontage requirements, if that's the direction that, that we want to go.
As written, would this, so let's say I own, thinking about maybe some of the houses on, on Lake Street, that their lots really go back to the tree line, so that area between lake and hotel. If one of those individuals were to split their lot, would it preclude the, the new owner of the back lot from being able to sell off a piece of their parcel to, say, a development that's going on internally behind them?
To, to sell a piece to an butter, say, to merge with a...
Yeah, does, does this preclude further parcelling off of the lot in any way? But I mean, I guess what I'm saying is...
Yeah, I don't think it would preclude the, you, you could also, you could always transfer land to an butter, provided you retain enough to meet the minimum lot size, without it being counted as a new lot, even if that other developer was going to propose a development. I don't think it changes that, if I'm understanding your, your line of thinking.
No, I, I think I've worked it out in my head, this...
If I, if I bought, let's, I'm just going to use your lot as an example. If I bought, let's say your lot was entirely residential and I bought a back lot, you gave me the right-of-way, and then somebody wanted to, Whitman Spring Road's probably a bad example, but let's assume it's not in the watershed and it's Whitman Spring Road.
Let's assume it was like totally developable, right?
Right. Then could I sell a piece of the back lot that I bought from you to add land area to the developer that's proposing lots off of the spring road? I think you could. I don't think this would change that. I think you could do that now.
You could do it before this.
Yeah, and I think you could still do it after.
Do it before this, right?
You would be able to after.
Provided that you still met the minimum lot size, I still met the minimum lot size.
And still be in a butter.
Yep.
I don't think this would give the ability to sell to a butter that you wouldn't have prior to doing this.
Other than maybe if, I guess the only instance where it might be a little different is let's say you have an a butter with a landlocked parcel already and they're the ones that buy your back lot, you know, then you would have been creating a buildable lot, but they might be able to site their house on their land and, and merge that back lot with their land. You still end up with one net new lot, I think. Backload lot owner could buy land from an butter, or instead of the reverse.
So the question was posed to us, to us, is this something that we want to proceed with? Is this a good idea or is this, I mean, we have the question that Mr. Seer put forward about how we want to handle, is this the instrument to handle instances like the disc golf course?
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't let their circumstance motivate you, I guess, in the decision-making, but just as an example of maybe...
As a tool to think about possible scenarios.
What if, what if you were trying to create that situation rather than having one existing where I have a house with my mortgage and I want to create a disc, disc golf course or a golf course, but I need commercial financing on a separate piece of collateral to do that? Would we want to promote that?
So thoughts, I mean, so I, yeah, I see two open questions right now on this. And I'm not hearing a lot of thoughts either way. And those open questions are, do we want to move forward with this kind of thing?
This is moving, moving forward, this is getting closer to what the comprehensive plan is?
Well, yeah, the comp plan says that we should start to move away from minimum lot dimensional frontage type standards and depths and go to more of a density base. And I think in a sense this, this starts to do that. The other thing is, is if, if there's a lot of uncertainty, we could always hold a public hearing and then go from there. It doesn't mean you have to act that night or move it forward, but you could get some feedback.
As I think about this, so, so I grew up in New Auburn. I grew up in New Auburn on one of the alphabet streets and the street backed up to the woods. My first house that I bought was on Broad Street. And so was in between Broad and Mill Street. So my, I had a neighbor behind me, neighbors on the side. And so when I think about, and then now I live out on West Auburn Road. So I've lived in like sort of three different types of neighborhoods. And I think about the neighborhood I grew up in, grew up in in New Auburn, something like this could be fine. You don't see it in those neighborhoods, but there are a couple really large lots. Then I think about where I was on Broad Street in a neighborhood like that. It might not necessarily be bad because you already had a relatively high density. In fact, you had lower density than was, than what was allowed in the zone. But when I think about where I currently live, what I'm immediately think of is that I, my house is in, is, it predates the rural strip, but it is in one of those strips. If I did a back lot in my old neighborhood... If I did a back lot in my old neighborhood, it would be adding a house in with other houses in a residential neighborhood that already had high density. If myself and all of my neighbors did it where I live now, it would be drastically increasing, because we all can, right? See, that's the difference, right? Where the strips are, they, almost all of us can. There's a potential to create a much higher density with the back lots in the neighborhood I live in now than there was in, say, the neighborhood I previously lived in, which already had a higher density and which made more sense to have a high density. So I don't think, I, I wouldn't necessarily say that I don't want to move forward with this, but I really want to think about the implication it has in different parts of the city and whether or not we want to limit it to parts of the city, whether we think it's appropriate for all parts of the city. But those are the kinds of questions I'm going to have going forward. Like how does this impact different types of neighborhoods? Because we have very, we have really different types of neighborhoods within the city.
Would you want to see some examples of like, if everybody chose to do this in a neighborhood, how many houses would be in a few different types of neighborhoods, maybe, or?
Can you say you can do this in this neighborhood, but not this one? You can do it by zone.
But, well, that's what I'm saying, that you, do we want to say it's appropriate to do, like for instance, okay, so right here, this is, actually, my, so Eric.
I think this might be your old house.
That is my old house, right there, okay?
They're already behind each other.
Okay. But, so I was on a third of an acre, but because of the way that zone is, I was actually on an oversized lot and could have potentially built, I think like a four unit or something like that, and still met density requirements. So it could have been split and a multi-unit put on, right?
Yeah, you had twice the frontage requirement.
Yeah, right, so as dense as that is, as dense as that looks, it already wasn't as dense as it could be. So it does make sense that you could increase the density in a neighborhood like that.
And I think that was what the comp plan was identifying, is that in a lot of cases, the only thing limiting the density that the zone allows is the frontage.
And that's the case with that lot?
With this lot, no, I had the frontage. It could have, it could have.
So you could have just done it?
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
So it doesn't, this, this doesn't necessarily affect that zone, or at least all of the houses in that zone?
Right.
Right, got it.
Yeah, it won't, it won't be every lot that's affected by it, certainly. You know, this might be an example in that zone where they have the 50 feet of frontage. They actually don't have enough room to have a driveway.
Right.
So I guess one way then that I hear you thinking about this, Mr. Seer, is un, creating unintended consequences of, of something like this that just was blanket applied to all zones within the city.
Right, I mean, we have density requirements that differ by zone for a specific reason, because we want to see specific types of densities within specific zones. I'm really stuck on the strip, because when you think about the strip, the strips were never intended to create density in the back. They were really to allow houses along the front. So there's a different goal there.
Pull up the strips.
Yeah, like Eric, go, go to, yeah, pick a strip, go to my house now.
Evan's house.
He's, he's in the wrong part of town now.
I can head north if you need. That's prob, there's more strips in the northern part of the city. So like West Auburn Road is a good example, one for longer.
Right, okay.
Strips.
So immediately to the right of Eric's cursor is my house, okay?
Oh, I hit it?
Eric's, yeah, Eric's, Eric's, no, that's near Douglas Down South, yeah, right there, okay? So.
300 feet of frontage.
Yep. So it meets the requirement there, no doubt. There's seven acres there. Okay? It could be split off and still have just enough to squeak in a house, right?
In the residential portion.
Yep.
Yep.
But is, and then now back out, okay?
But most of them could.
And now, look, most of them could, right? So now you're saying, would it be appropriate to double the density right there?
Yeah, but you can do that now, can't you?
No, because I have enough frontage for my lot, and that's the case with most of the lots in my neighborhood.
Oh, just for one lot?
Is that we have enough frontage for one lot, but not enough for two.
Okay, got you.
Right, so.
And that, that's the exact flexibility that this would unlock.
Right, and so the question is, do we want to unlock that? If we do, do we want to limit it where it gets unlocked? To me, those are the questions we're going to have to ask as we move forward. Like what, what does that do in different parts of town?
So is that something staff can?
We could look at a few, a few examples, maybe pick a stretch of road and kind of show yes or no, which ones could happen, and may.
Well, so I guess my personal feeling, I don't want to speak for the board, is that it would be valuable to see what kind of effect this would have in the denser areas
Yep.
of, of the city rather than the strip, because.
And you have.
It feels like this sort of ordinance is aimed at that more than, to me, feels like it would be aimed at that more than it would be to the outlying parts of the city.
Or at least not split zoned, or. It seems like some of the concern is coming from the strip environment.
Yeah, well, and the strips are all in the outer part of town, right? And the idea is if we're trying, and I think we do need to create infill, and I think we have places where we can create, create infill.
It's, it's almost as if the areas where we've created sort of a blockier zoning pattern instead of the strip, we've already decided that infill is acceptable in that.
Yeah.
In that area.
That's exactly what I'm thinking. The strips are.
So I, as I'm processing this, I'm, I'm thinking about, so we, we were just looking at my neighborhood and my old house in Broad Street, which could have been split. Actually, it couldn't. There was a municipal, like sewer pipe under the yard, but that's.
Purely from a lot size.
Right, yeah, but purely from a lot size, it, it could have, it could have happened, right? And it could have been not just another single family home, but a multifamily home. So if the goal is to increase density, I think, I think we all agree that, you know, if we're going to add houses, we should increase density, and you can't build houses without increasing density. Right, yeah, you, yeah, you can't build houses with zero density. It doesn't work. Where will, where would this be likely to have the largest impact, i.e. create the largest change? Is it like 80% of the lots out on the rural strips could have this, but only like 10% of the residential lots closer to the center of town could do this? Because if that's the case, this might not be the tool we want to create infill.
I guess I'm, and I'm thinking of from the, from the strip perspective, like this area was designated as a large block of rural, rural residential land. The strips were more, we don't want density here, but we're trying to give the property owner some flexibility along the road frontage. It was kind of a compromise in a lot of the strips.
But, and so that's zoned the same as the strips in the north?
Same zone, but just more of a blocky pattern than a strip pattern, that they've kind of accepted that there could be infill like.
Right, so if you did it by zone.
All right, so you can already see there is infill, right? Like you can see like there's internal roads there and a housing development. It was decided that was appropriate, right?
Yep.
Even though the zone's the same, there was a decision at some point that some infill in new roads even potentially was acceptable in that area. That's a tricky one, though, when you start talking the same zone, different patterns of.
You can't say you do it in this zone here, but you can't do it.
I know, it's hard. It becomes hard, yeah. That's why it's almost like the entirety, I'm asked the question earlier, and I'm sort of convincing myself that the entirety of both lots might need to be in a residential zone, not necessarily the same residential zone, but.
That would be one approach, that would try to get at that idea, I think, or not doing it in the Lake Auburn watershed might be a part of that. That's where we have a lot of our, our really strip.
The entirety of the back lot, couldn't see, so there's enough frontage and there's enough of a strip to be able to split off the back under something like this and build a house. And the back part of that person's lot would be in the ag zone. But there's not enough in that strip to split off an entirely another lot that meets the correct. Does that make sense?
Because you can't double split the back lot.
Right, like it.
You can't just carve off the ag zone.
You could, you could keep the ag zone, and you could sell a lot behind you for somebody else to build.
But it wouldn't meet the lot size requirement. See what I'm saying? Like they, they wouldn't have, I could do the back, like there's not enough, there's not enough in the residential zone to create two lots that meet the lot requirements for that zone out of my one part that fits in that zone.
In your situation, you don't believe there is?
I, I believe that. There might be. I don't know. Uh, let's see.
Your neighbor's, some of your neighbors, it definitely could.
But what you're saying is that you want to let your abutting neighbor buy your back lot and still have two lots that are buildable? We're at the, at the nine o'clock mark now, too.
Yep. To answer, okay, Matt asked a specific question. My answer is, I think it's reasonable to continue to look at this. Second part of your question, I don't, I, I don't feel comfortable turning it into like a full play, full-on public hearing next meeting.
Fair enough.
I agree completely. Bam.
So we will listen to the tapes and kind of look at the feedback and see if we can provide some of those examples, but not schedule a public hearing and.
Yep. I think that's great. So we are past nine o'clock, which means we can't start anything new, unless the board agrees to do that. What we have left is old business, that's signing, we've done that, public comment, and then miscellaneous.
I make a motion to extend the public meeting beyond nine o'clock to include public comment, item seven and item eight miscellaneous, upcoming items for April, and B, planning board, other items for discussion.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. So at this time, I'd like to open for public comment.
Public's tired.
Hearing none, we'll, we'll close that. Miscellaneous, so what's coming in April?
So I'm going to try to recall all of it. There is a four or five lot subdivision on the corner of Stevens Mill and Hotel Road. There is.
Is that subdivision or wasn't it apartments?
Uh, it's a subdivision, so they're, I think they're proposing a shared drive with four single-family house lots. They have the frontage to create four lots, but they've been encouraged not to have four driveways on Hotel Road. So I think.
I thought it was originally, okay, okay.
I wonder if it's a different one that, yeah, I haven't reviewed the application, so it could have changed since the draft a couple months ago. But the Mystique Way development that the board had seen in the past, that's been kind of dubbed as Maine's first cannabis business park. There's four buildings approved out there. They wanted to, they want to look at another 15 buildings. So we're talking, you know, five to $10 million worth of building value out of four, and they're looking at 15 more, so concentrating them makes a lot of sense. And we'll, we'll start to review that this week after this meeting is, is completed. And there is a, I know there's two more projects, I'm drawing a blank on exactly what they are, but there's two more commercial projects beyond that. No more solar for next month, but two more commercial projects.
Okay. Other items for discussion? Anybody have any?
Just that the, you had mentioned this at the beginning, that the mayor is looking for a member of the ad hoc committee to look at all of our existing committee structures and try to make recommendations about where we have too many, where we might need one. And he's looking for a representative from the planning board.
So I think if you're interested in that, rather than take time to discuss it now, just let me or Eric know and we can.
Yeah, if you want to let Matthew know, you can make as the chair.
Yeah, as the chair, just let me know and we can talk about it. I think, you know, what, what it's going to do is a data-based look at all the boards and committees and commissions that exist in Auburn, with the hope of finding some efficiencies, as far as I can tell. Other things that are coming, I think the council is interested in looking at the comp plan again and doing an update. So I've got some other things here, but given the time, I think we'll just leave it at that. Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Toby.
Second.
All in favor?
How does it feel to make motions, Evan?
What?
How does it feel to make motions?
Nice.